Hingham School Committee Meeting of June 4th at 7:30 PM. First item on the agenda is item 2.1, to approve minutes of the school committee meeting held on May 7th.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the school committee meeting held on May 7th, 2018.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Carrie. Any discussion?
I do have discussion. I'd like to note in section four, under the comments, that I should be referred to as the vice chair and not the chair.
Thank you for catching that.
But that's, that's it. So, I guess I would make a motion to approve the amended minutes of, unless someone else had anything else on the minutes. Anybody else?
So, second of the amended? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Minutes are approved. All right. Agenda item number three, questions and comments. I believe we have someone tonight, so I will just quickly read this. Comments are always welcome. As agenda items are discussed, we have set aside time in the agenda to enable members of the audience to raise questions or make comments on any matters of general concern. Limited, uh, sorry, individual speakers are limited to three minutes. Be reminded that meetings are televised and we ask you to respect the privacy of others.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
You're welcome.
And other school committee members, meeting minutes, excuse me, members. My name is Al Chambers. I live at the Lincoln School and in one of my old classrooms. I came here tonight to ask you to participate in something that I think might have great significance for the committee and the parents of children who are students here in Hingham. I've been active in the Hingham Police Alumni Association for a long period of time. It was started by Steve Carlson, who I hope most of you remember, is a wonderful guy. And it's been a form of community relations within the town to present issues that the police need help on. Earlier this year, the FBI released a very detailed organizational plan for the response to a school shooting. The name of the film is called The Coming Storm. And it is one fascinating film. And it preceded, by the way, the Parkland incident, and yet it's almost exactly what happened. Same amount of students, same size high school, et cetera, et cetera. Our police have been well-trained in how to react to this, and of course, nobody wants to see it happen. But they had then done their own video, which was filmed up at the new middle school, on how to react to a shooter in the building. And it is also fabulous to watch. It's graphic, it's tough, but it's worth seeing. And so I want to, we are planning, when I say "we," I don't have a group, by the way, I suggested that we have a presentation of this made to more people. We had it done last month to the men's breakfast down in the senior center. And it was so interesting that people would not leave. They asked the officers to stay behind, they went to another room and continued. What I'd like to do in conjunction with the Republicans who are willing to sponsor it and the Hingham Police is I'd like to redo the whole thing in a larger venue. And we're thinking of doing it in August, prior to school starting and after school, that's out in spring, of course. And I think we may get a very, very large response to it. So I'm asking, I think it would be suitable to be mentioned to your PTA groups or other parents here in Hingham that have students in the school. We may need your help in terms of possibly the high school auditorium. We considered Sanborn. We know we can get the two big conference rooms on the third floor here. But we're not sure how much of a response we'll get. I would bet it will be big. Okay, we're going to advertise it. And so that's why I'm here. Happy to answer any questions. But this is a program that many parents here in Hingham want to get a good look at, and they will be impressed by the preparation of our police.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Do folks have questions for Mr. Chambers?
I guess I have a question. So this movie was produced by the Hingham Police Department?
There were two videos. One is the FBI video, which is very professional. And that's the strategy of how to handle it. And then the second video was done at the middle school during the training up there. And it's, for me, it brought it to life because I knew the people doing the job and the fire was there, paramedics and other response teams. And it was, I was proud of it. It's a good job.
And this would be, the audience would be adults, not for students?
Yeah, we do not want, sorry. It may be a little too graphic.
And would those videos be shown? Do you plan to show both videos?
Yes. And the police will be there to answer questions. I'll say.
Are the videos available to look at, like just online or on YouTube or anything?
I don't know whether it is or not. I don't think it's online.
Okay.
You could ask at the police station downstairs, and they might let you take it.
Okay.
Carrie, I had the same question. I guess, before we promote it anything, I would want to make sure, I personally would want to have seen it so that I would know how we're communicating the message. I understand the message, but, you know, for us to participate and I'd want to be knowledgeable about what it was. So I just would want to preview it.
I'm sure that would be fine with everybody.
Prior to sharing the communication.
So if I understand it, The Coming Storm is online to see?
Oh, okay.
Oh, is it really?
Yes.
Oh, great. But the Hingham Police-
Not the second one.
Yeah.
I would suggest that John has a task force this year, the Safety Security Task Force. It's made up of members of our staff, but also members of the Hingham Police Department, including Glenn. And they've been working on here. One of the things they're doing is updating our, our plan that should totally be redone. And that perhaps John might get together with Glenn as to, you know, how this fits in. That would be my only concern. Are we sending one message and the video may be another message, albeit to different audiences? So, so if John can get together with Glenn and talk about how it fits with the mission, because Glenn is on the committee, that might be a way of his sharing. If the one video is on, online and accessible, then the other one, the local one, Glenn and John could arrange for it to be viewed by, you know, whomever among the school committee staff would like to see it.
Makes sense.
Would that work out, Al?
Did you ask me a question?
Yeah, I asked if it would work well for your purpose if John and Glenn can get together about the local video and be sure it's consistent with the message we're sending out.
Absolutely fine with me.
And allow them-
I don't know. It's just something I think we should make aware of citizens.
Good.
And I think they will be impressed.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the audience? All right. Thank you. Then we will move on to item four, superintendent's report.
Thank you. So, we've had a number of events and activities lately, and I'm not going to comment on the, on the high school one per se or graduation, because I'm sure between you and Emma that we'll get a full, full read about that. I do want to talk a bit about the Memorial Day activities that happened in several of our schools and also that happened in this building a week ago, a week ago Monday. And let you know that we got several emails and letters about the elementary presentations from a couple of the veterans. And so those are always nice to see and hear. And there is one in particular that I will share with you that was written by Dave Sargent, who is a member of the local veterans groups and very complimentary. He had attended the event at the Plymouth River School and spoke with quite a lot of passion about seeing very young kids and the red, white, and blue and the handmade decorations and so on and what they are learning at such an early age. The event here was very well-attended. I'm always proud of how we celebrate those kinds of events in our town. And while we may disagree about a lot of things, we don't disagree about the need for respect for our veterans and what they provided for us. But Hingham High School was particularly well-represented on that day. Our band with Brian Sinkata was there. Again, they're there every year and, you know, kids give up their time on a holiday to come here and be part of the celebration. We had a student who sang the National Anthem at the beginning of the ceremony. In addition to the band, we had members of the Veterans Appreciation Club who read the proclamation from the governor on that day. Subsequent to the event, there was a luncheon for the veterans at G A R Hall and the Veterans Appreciation Club students went there and assisted with everybody getting in and getting fed with the buffet and so on. And then they went on to a ceremony comparable to the one in our auditorium up at Linden Ponds. They have a large number of veterans who live there and they have their own Memorial Day and Veterans Day celebrations, and our students went there as well. So, you know, nice to see so many youngsters that really were participating at the elementary level and being a formal part of the ceremony as they are every year at the, at the auditorium here. So I did want to mention that. There are lots of other things going on in the elementary schools, the end-of-year concerts and the fifth grade. I don't like to call the graduations. I like to call them celebrations, recognitions, or whatever. To me, there's only one graduation. But in any event, all of those events are, are coming up and well-planned and are always done very well. And particularly give thanks to the parents in our community who provide so much for our kids. And at the elementary schools in particular, this is the time of year when they provide remembrances and a wonderful ceremony, a little different in each building, but they are crucial to, to our partnership and, and we would be remiss in not recognizing that. More to the point, for tonight, I want to introduce Suzanne Viness. So Suzanne, stand up. Maybe you'd like to come to the microphone. Suzanne is a newly appointed Student Services Director. And we had, many of you know, a very comprehensive search and lots of opportunity for Suzanne to meet with, with folks in our community, parents and staff members and to take tour of our buildings and so on. Suzanne has been here a couple of times since then. Most of you know she is the coordinator of special education at Brookline High School, so is coming here as our director of special ed. And Suzanne and I have talked on a couple of occasions about a contract and we're pretty close. We have some verbal agreement, but pretty close to getting our documents all in line and to get those, those signed. And as well, we're having some beginning conversations about a transition and numbers of different individuals and groups that Suzanne will need to meet with along the way. So, welcome to Hingham.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I'm delighted to be here.
I've said several times that each time Suzanne comes here, she seems even more excited about coming.
It's the truth.
And we're getting more excited about having her arrive.
It's the truth, yes.
So we'll continue with our, with our plans, but we wanted you and the audience at home to be able to say hello if you haven't met Suzanne before.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
Anything else, Doc?
No, I think, I think not, but I know that you had wanted to give some thanks.
I did. I had a bunch of thank yous to give. I gave some of them at the graduation the other day. But in particular, I wanted to thank the Hingham Rec Department for hosting the class of 2018 at their senior picnic, May 24th. It was a beautiful day. Thank the school department for, for providing some of the food for the graduates or the soon-to-be graduates. They had a great picnic sort of field day outside, but it was great. And also a huge shout-out to the maintenance crew that helped us all day long. They were amazing. I cannot say enough about how much support the maintenance and custodial staff gives to all these events that Dot was mentioning that happened not only at the end of the year, but all throughout the year. It was great. And then, of course, graduation was lovely. I heard great things from parents. Carlos and I both had graduates, so it was particularly touching. But it was just a great ceremony. Everybody commented on how, how nice of a ceremony it was. And senior night went off without a hitch. The graduates, 275 of them, had a big overnight party at the high school, and it was very well-attended, so 275 out of a class of two, no, 327? 327, I think, is the graduating class. So the party was great. The kids stayed all night long from 11:00 PM to 5:00 AM. They had a great time, and it was a Herculean effort by probably 100 parents who decorated, planned it, fed them, chaperoned them, played games with them, but they had a great time. So thank you to the community for the support and schools for the support and everything. It was a great, great end send-off to the kids. So, that was it for me.
And I did leave at your place. I know several of you are parents of graduates, so you were at the awards night and got the, the listing of awards and scholarships and certificates of achievement and so on. And so that list is there for your enjoyment. I think it was about $340,000 presented that night, all from local scholarships, not, not from the colleges, but from local scholarships. And many of those are Hingham families in memory of someone, or they are businesses that are, that are local. So, a lot of work and by the guidance department, getting all of that organized and I think all the checks in the right envelopes and that sort of thing.
That is a big effort as well, and extremely generous of this fantastic town for all those funds for the, for the students. It definitely helps. All right, so item number five, communications.
Mm-hmm.
So you have some communications, Dot? Yes?
We talked at the last meeting about our, our, being the, the leadership team, signing on to a resolution similar to, if not identical, to the one that the school committee approved a couple of weeks ago. And so I did speak last week with that leadership team and, and asked them if they would be wanting to, to sign with those of us at central office that certainly we're going to sign on. And I've heard from just about everyone at this, at this point, and all happy to do that. So we will make appropriate changes, very minor changes, not certainly in the intent of the resolution, but in the actual wording, and, and get that to you. So I'm not sure where we are with respect to student, a piece of it, but, but you can, you can count on us to be part of the message.
Thank you very much. The, Nicole Piantes did get back to me that the student council did unanimously vote to pass the joint resolution with the school committee. Yes. Yeah, so that was great news. Sorry if I stole your thunder, Emma. Okay, that's great. So I, do you have any other communications or? All right, so 5.2, student communications.
This past Thursday, we had our Hingham High School senior prom, and with many helping hands, it was a success. As the excitement for the seniors continued, graduation was on Saturday night, with speeches from Mr. Swanson, Mrs. Eyre, the salutatorian, Dylan Davis, the valedictorian, Kelly Austinberg, a volunteered speaker, Joe Kavanaugh, and to finish, the class president, Maeve Lee. For those there, they probably know it started off to be a gross night and it turned into a moment many will remember. Shared by Maeve Lee, the senior class raised over $40,000, and everyone graduating has a plan for the future, whether it's spending time fighting for the country, working or going to school. Later that night, thanks to many parents, including Mrs. Eyre, the seniors were able to attend a well-run and fun senior night. And you know it's fun when my brother comes home showing me videos of him being hypnotized and singing All the Single Ladies by Beyoncé.
Highlight of the night.
Highlight of the night.
As the year comes to an end, many sports teams finish up their season games and get together to try to win some tournament state championships. Also, at our last DUCO meeting, as Mrs. Eyre just mentioned, we did read and voted on the safety policies, and it was passed. Also at that meeting, we found out that Ms. Piantes has retired as the head advisor for the student council, and Mrs. Black, a history teacher, has decided to take over. In addition, the summer reading book drive is being held this week, and the books donated will be sold next week. This is, anyone can drop off any books that are summer reading requirement or optional books. And next week, they'll be sold for $3 at 7:30 in the main lobby of the high school. And lastly, today, we started the Pack the Pantry Food Drive, which will last until the 15th.
Great. Thank you so much, Emma. All right. 5.3, any other communications? All right, no? Yep. All right. Item six, new business. 6.1, to receive the Foreign Language Department Program Review from Erica Pollard.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. I want to thank the school committee and Dr. Gallo, Dr. LeBilwa, and Mr. Ferris for having me here tonight. How do I close this?
Top right, see the blue box come up? And that makes it goes. There you go.
There we go. Um, where did the video go?
I think it's the top middle.
There we go. Is it open somewhere else?
No, wait, that's okay.
When will you let me work it out? You can talk.
It was open. Uh? Uh?
Is that it?
Nope. Nobody voted on anything.
Unfortunate. Unfortunate, right.
Nobody voted on anything in my friend's case, I promise.
Erica, is it the one in red?
No, that's the PowerPoint. Oh, there we go. Okay, thank you. So, assuming that it's going to cooperate, I wanted to start tonight with a short video that was produced by our friends at Harbor Media that is going to highlight some of the great things that the Foreign Language Department has been working on. Here we go. Perfect.
We're lucky that we live and work in a community that I think really values foreign language learning. People understand that it's important for our students to know how to communicate in more than one language. But I think a lot of people don't necessarily realize that in addition to those intrinsic benefits, through the study of a second language, kids get a lot of other benefits as well. From kindergarten through fifth grade, we are working on building a foundation for language learning. So we're learning some Spanish, but we're also learning about language in general and about how learning a language works. So there's a lot of focus at that level on strategies, on skills, particularly on the skill of identifying and using cognates. So understanding that there are lots of words in Spanish that are really closely related to words they already know in English.
When you learn a foreign language from a younger age, you benefit cognitively, you benefit academically, as well as socially. So cognitively, they say, the more exposure you have over your entire lifetime, starting from a younger age, the less apt you are to get dementia or develop Alzheimer's or some kind of memory disorder, just due to how the brain works and how it works over many years. Academically, learning a foreign language from a younger age specifically, it helps support your performance in other subjects, like it could be social studies, math, science, English, even art and music. The younger you start learning a foreign language, the better you are at taking standardized tests, at multitasking, and incredible thinking. So it does support the, the learning of a foreign language. And socially, the less inhibitions you have about making a silly sound or stringing sounds together that are, might sound funny for you, or learning the phonetics and the pronunciation in a different language. So, kind of the younger you are when you start to get used to those things, the better you are over time. And I think they say it's around puberty when, if you haven't started to acquire a language, it's going to actually become harder for you. I just think that the longer they're exposed to it, the longer they have to become better at it. They're, they're already learning to read, they're already learning to write, they're already learning math. So what we do is we just do that in Spanish. It bridges the gap and it connects the Spanish room, the Spanish classroom, to what they're doing with their teachers and, and reading and writing already. You know, it's fun to see them walk out, you know, proud of themselves and their abilities.
At the middle school, foreign language learning starts to get a little bit more academic. In sixth grade, students meet every other day, but starting in seventh grade and eighth grade, they meet every day and it's a regular academic class. They are learning more intermediate-level skills, which is how do I take those words and turn them into sentences that help me to communicate about what I want to say? We're still focused on basic communication, on skills and tasks that kids are going to encounter in their everyday life.
I really like the middle school because I feel that the kids are enthusiastic and still very interested in learning. And even though they might not be as mature as the high school kids just yet, I feel like they're nice enough and like cute enough that they want to learn it. It's very interesting because it's pretty much the first time they're getting into a lot of the grammar and more vocab than they do from elementary school, and they're really starting to learn more about grammar structures. And some of them have no idea, and some of, you know, some of them end up learning a lot more about their own language through that. Now it's a lot more hands-on, where they have Chromebooks, and we have a great foreign language lab, so we can go in, they can get partnered up, they can talk to each other. I really like when they can, you know, kind of connect something to a place that they've traveled to, they're able to say, oh, you know, Senora Fosse, I was able to, you know, order my meal in Mexico in Spanish, and it was great. And they really feel confident about that. They don't have to just sit by themselves in front of a book and memorize it all. They can actually relate it to interviewing their partners. And they definitely are getting homework, they're, they're able to use their online text, and so they're getting more familiar with using technology in a different language. And I think that's also good for other courses. And also, of course, there's a whole geography where they're getting prepared, where they have a world geography class in seventh grade. We're already learning about Spanish-speaking countries or French-speaking countries in the beginning of the year, so by the time they get to that toward the end of the year, they already know a lot of the countries and the capitals, and they're familiar with that area. So I know that they feel confident with that.
In the high school, we're looking at more advanced language proficiency. And that means, how do I take those sentences and link them together to be paragraphs or essays to convince somebody of a point that I want to make, or to do research of my own about a topic related to the culture that we're studying?
We all believe that learning Chinese makes them more competitive in life for admissions to, to colleges. You can take me as an example. You, if you can speak a new language, you get more job opportunity. Like, I went to this country 10 years ago, and I got a teaching job in two years. If I cannot speak English, no way I can do that. U.S. government actually view a few languages as critical languages, which means learning these languages can be critical for U.S. national security. So Chinese is one of those critical languages. I want to say my favorite thing about teaching is about teaching Chinese characters. That's, that's different. You know, most all languages only have one system. The spelling and speaking, they are- and understand each other's culture better, and be more culturally sensitive and tolerant.
We do have a lot of opportunities for students to use their language outside of the classroom and that's really important. It's an important part of what we do to organize either daily field trips, or visitors, or trips abroad.
We have sponsored trips all over the world. We have sent groups to China, to Japan, to Montreal, to France. We've done all kinds of different trips too. For example, I was part of the Dominican Republic trip, which was a service trip. So, that was extremely rewarding for students. It was very eye-opening. The fact that they're able to choose from so many different trips and so many different experiences when they're still in high school is really amazing. This way, when they leave Hingham High School, they can get to college already having such amazing cultural experiences.
We do have some things that we're working on, sort of rolling out, that are new this year and hopefully next year. One of the big ones that we're working on is Massachusetts recently signed into law a Seal of Biloteracy. And the Seal of Biloteracy is recognized by the state when a student has achieved a certain level of proficiency in a second language. So, when they can demonstrate proficiency in two languages, they get this distinction which shows up on their transcript and sort of can prove to a college or to an employer that they have this measurable skill in a foreign language. This is the first year that we have offered it. We're starting testing this spring. But we actually have a whole lot of students who have qualified already to win these awards based on their AP scores.
The curriculum for the AP Spanish literature course is a lot like the syllabus that I had when I was in graduate school. So, for me to be able to share the works that I read in graduate school with my high school seniors, I think is incredible.
My favorite part of my job now as director is that I get to be in all of these classrooms, K through 12, and see the amazing things that teachers are working on. They are people who are really excited about teaching, but also really excited about what they teach, so that their classroom is a really fun place to be. It's amazing to see kids really get to the point where they can go, wow, all that stuff that you taught me, I can use it. I can really do this. I can really ask for directions. I can really order my own food. I can really converse with somebody in this foreign language. For we do live in a community where people care about the bigger world. People understand that the world is bigger than Hingham and it's bigger than Massachusetts and it's bigger than the United States. And that means that our students have to be able to communicate with people who don't speak English. Alright, I want to thank Harbor Media for helping to produce that video. To show... There are lots of things that I could tell you about our programs, but sometimes it's more interesting to hear it from some of the teachers and see some of it in action. So, I want to share with you tonight some of the highlights of our program in the Foreign Language Department. I won't go into as much detail on every point as I did in my written report, but if you have questions about anything in the written report, I'll be happy to answer them for you at the end. I think it's important to connect the work of the Foreign Language Department to the overarching mission of the Hingham Public Schools, particularly that last part. We want to enable all students to develop the knowledge and skills necessary for success as local and global citizens. And in order to become productive global citizens, students have to have proficiency in a second language and an understanding of other cultures. I see that as a really important part of global citizenship. Increasing global interdependence means that the ability to communicate in a language other than English is very important. And proficiency in a foreign language provides an in-depth understanding of a different culture's values and its beliefs, and it promotes respect for differences from our own culture. So, for those reasons, I think that the work that the Language Department is doing is incredibly important. Now, to accomplish this goal of helping our students to become global citizens, the Foreign Language Department focuses on what are known as the Five Cs of Foreign Language Teaching. These are endorsed by the American Council on the Teaching of Foreign Languages, which is ACTFO for short. And they also form the basis of the Massachusetts Foreign Language Curriculum Frameworks. They sort of provide the context in which foreign language programming has been developed for our schools. And the Five Cs are, to begin with, communication. We hope that students will be able to communicate effectively. Cultures, that they will interact with cultural competence and understanding. Connections, they'll connect what they learn in their foreign language classes with what they're learning in other disciplines and be acquiring information and different perspectives through their second language studies. They're going to make comparisons. They're going to not only learn how to communicate in a language, but also learn about language, how their own language works and how it compares to the language they're learning. And communities, we hope that our students will learn to communicate and interact with cultural competence to participate in multilingual communities, whether those are close to home or far away. Now, I think it's helpful, in order to better understand the structure of our program, to talk very quickly about the way that proficiency in a foreign language is measured, because it's a little bit different from what you might see in some other disciplines. These proficiency levels, like the Five Cs that I just showed you, are set by the American Council for the Teaching of Foreign Languages and they form an important part as well of the Massachusetts Frameworks for Foreign Language. Part of what the Massachusetts Frameworks does is talk not only about content, but about skills, about proficiency. And proficiency is what students can do with language in real-world situations that are not practiced, that are completely spontaneous. So, proficiency isn't tied to a list of vocabulary or a list of verb conjugations, it's about whether or not you can complete a task. So, at the novice level, the tasks that students are completing are very simple. They're usually at the word level, so we're talking about very practiced lists of words and basic phrases. At the intermediate level, they're building up to be able to use sentences, but also to be able to create a little bit with language, to produce language that they maybe haven't practiced or heard before, but can produce based on the patterns that they've heard. At the advanced level, students can communicate in the past, the present, and the future, and they can handle situations where something goes wrong. So, if there's a problem, they can use their language skills to solve it. And then at the top of the scale there, so those superior and distinguished distinctions are where students can really use language in an abstract way. They can make a hypothesis or talk about something that's abstract, they can support their opinion with a list of facts, and handle a much more serious complication if need be. So, one of the things that the Massachusetts Frameworks for Foreign Language tells us is how much time approximately students will spend at each level of proficiency on this scale, so that's one of the things that I'll refer back to as I talk about the structure of the program. So, at the elementary level, our students have Spanish from kindergarten through 5th grade. We are lucky that we have a Spanish teacher in each of our four elementary schools and students have Spanish class once every six-day cycle. The focus is going to be at that novice level that I just talked about, but with a communicative focus, so we're going to focus on the tasks and topics that are going to be useful to children. Teachers use a wide variety of methodologies to meet a whole different variety of needs. You know, elementary classrooms can be very diverse and our teachers are very skilled in meeting the needs of a lot of different students. And they're not only teaching students Spanish, but they're also teaching students how to learn a language. So, they're doing a lot of work, for example, with the alphabet, that supports the work in phonics and decoding that kids are doing in their ELA studies. And they're learning about language learning strategies. What do I do when I come across a word that I don't understand? Cognates is a huge skill that they focus on at the elementary level, but also determining the meaning of a new term through context, using pictures, for example, in a text to help support what you're reading when there's unfamiliar words. These are all skills that are really transferable to their other studies and is going to help our students to become stronger readers, not only in Spanish, but also in English. We have a focus at this level on predictable routines, because they provide students with a lot of practice. It takes a lot of time and practice to learn a second language. So, kids, for example, will have this calendar routine that they go through every day. Even by 1st grade, the kids can do this no problem. They can tell you the day of the week, what day it is today, what day it will be tomorrow, what's the date, what's the season. They can do all of that in Spanish, because they've practiced it a lot. We also see at this stage the same types of vocabulary topics that are recycled with increasing depth. So, for example, family is a topic that is obviously very important. It's one that, at the element, at the kindergarten level, we might learn a short number of words. We might learn just to talk about our immediate family. And then in 1st grade, when we come back to that topic, we're going to come back to it with a little bit more depth. The task gets a little bit more complex, the vocabulary gets a little bit more varied, so that kids are coming back to those topics and having opportunities to review and practice every year. So, to connect back to that proficiency scale that I showed you a minute ago, this is where we expect our students will be at the end of 5th grade. The proficiency targets are broken down by skill level, sorry, by skill area, so listening, reading, speaking, and writing. And this gives us a general overview of what we hope that students can do at the end of 5th grade. At the middle school, our students have the option to choose between Spanish and French. In the 6th grade, they meet every other day, and then starting in 7th grade, they meet every day. Starting then in 8th grade, they have the option to choose either an advanced or an upper standard level course in Spanish or French. At this level, just like at the elementary level, we're still focusing on communicative skills. What is the task that you can complete using this language that you have learned? It's much more than memorizing a list of verbs, or some conjugations, or tenses. It's about what you can do with it. There's also a strong focus at the middle school level on strategies for language learning, because a lot of these strategies are transferable and the same strategies that will make kids successful in a foreign language class are going to help them be successful in other classes as well. Our teachers at this level are able to meet the needs of a wide variety of learners and they plan really engaging instruction that gets kids very excited about learning a language. So, by the end of 8th grade, this is about where we hope our students will be, is at the novice high level. Now, you might look at this and say, this seems like a really long time to be at what we term the novice level. But this is in line with what the Massachusetts Frameworks anticipate for students with this level of exposure, with this many hours of practice under their belt, this is about where we can expect them to be. And again, this is spontaneous, unpracticed language, which means that often kids in class are completing tasks at a higher level, because they're familiar tasks. They've practiced them, they've learned the appropriate vocabulary, and so they're able to perform tasks at a higher level as long as there's support. Alright, at the high school level, we have lots of choices. Students can choose to continue with Spanish or French, or they can choose Chinese or Latin. I think it's interesting to note that if you look at enrollment data in foreign language courses from 2010 to today, about every, every year, about 85% of high school students are enrolled in a foreign language course. And that's significant, because the graduation requirement is two years. So, we can assume that about half of the kids at the high school need to be in a foreign language class, but a lot more of them are choosing it, which I think is significant for a lot of reasons. The number of students also who are enrolling in 4th-year language classes are Spanish 5, French 5, Chinese 4, Latin 4 classes. That number is also rising significantly, which tells me that more and more kids are sticking with their language study through all four years of high school, which I think is great. As I said, it takes a long time to get proficient, so I love to see them stick around in those programs for as long as possible. Our programs, both at the high school and at the middle school, are supplemented by a wide variety of co-curricular activities. And they're a really important part of what we do, because if you think back to those Five Cs, the last one is communities. And the kids need to be connected either to a local community, one that we've created that's a linguistic community, or when it's possible, to communities a little bit outside of our own comfort zone. So, our teachers plan a wide variety of field trips and travel experiences for kids. Some of them take kids really far away and some of them are fairly close to home, but it's all trying to get to that communities aspect of language learning, to help them to connect to languages, to places where their languages are spoken, and to really get a chance to try them out. So, the proficiency targets for high school vary fairly widely, because we have a wide variety of courses available, but this is a standard set of proficiency targets for an AP language course. And to give a little bit of perspective, if you're familiar with Advanced Placement exams, an intermediate/mid result is about generally associated with a 3 on an AP exam, which is the lowest passing score for an Advanced Placement test. Many of our students are actually exceeding these proficiency targets by the end of high school, and I will show you some data on that in just a minute. So, I want to tell you about a few major changes since the last time there was a program review. I'm going to focus on the three that are in bold, because I think that those are the most significant ones. When I started with the Hingham Public Schools, I taught two sections of Chinese. And in the time that I've been here, the program has grown to the point where we now have two teachers, which is wonderful, and we are able to offer Chinese one all the way through AP. We've had some good success with the AP course, and I'm really proud of the way that this program has grown. I hope that it's going to continue to grow, not only because obviously it's very close to my heart personally, but I think that knowledge of Chinese is really important for our students, because of the role that China plays in the world today. So, I'm pleased that this program has flourished the way that it has. Another significant change is the adoption of a new textbook series for Spanish over the last few years. We reviewed a wide variety of textbook offerings before making our choice, and the textbook that we chose is called Espanol by Santana, very creative name, I know. And what we were looking for when we selected a text was something that would have that communicative focus that I've talked about, not just a list, but a focus on communicative tasks, and that would be accessible to all of our students, something that we really felt like every student could be successful with. We selected this text because we felt like it checked those boxes, as well as quite a few more. It has a great online platform for practice that allows kids, this is an example of an online activity that the kids can do with our online text. They can match the photos, you know, do a little bit of reading practice and match it with an image. Then they get immediate feedback as to how they did. This allows students to really check their understanding and understand what they're not understanding right then in the moment. The text also does a really nice job of integrating culture. It's not just an add-on, it's a real central part of the text. And provides a whole wide variety of ancillary materials, including some graded readers that go along with it, that we've found to be really helpful. Now, because we have these digital resources, kids at the middle school are able to use them on their Chromebooks, or in the language lab that was mentioned in the video, or right here on their smartboards in the classroom. And the last big thing is the Seal of Biloteracy that I mentioned in the video that you just saw, so I won't go into too much detail, except to show you some results. One thing that's nice about the Seal of Biloteracy is that it recognizes student achievement in language learning, no matter where the student learned the language. So, if they learned it with us at, in the Hingham Public Schools, that's great, but if it's a language that they learned somewhere else, I think it's also important to recognize that. And so, the Seal of Biloteracy gives us a tool to recognize achievement in almost any language, and regardless of where the learning came from. This year, we asked students to apply for this award and they paid a small fee to participate in the testing. But going forward, I'd really love to work on ways to identify eligible students who might not apply, and to expand this testing a little bit, because it really... But if it's a language that they learned somewhere else, I think it's also important to recognize that. And so the Seal of Bilinguality gives us a tool to recognize achievement in almost any language, and regardless of where the learning came from. This year, we asked students to apply for this award, and they paid a small fee to participate in the testing. But going forward, I'd really love to work on ways to identify eligible students who might not apply and to expand this testing a little bit because it really was very successful this year. If I connect to those proficiency targets that I showed you a minute ago, you can see that the silver seal is that intermediate/mid. That's where we set our proficiency target for our AP courses. Gold is intermediate high. And platinum is advanced low, which is really a very impressive amount of language proficiency for a student in high school. It's really achievement at a very high level. So we were able to give 93 total awards to students this year. Thirty-two of them qualified based on their AP exams that they took during their junior year. And the remainder qualified by taking a proficiency exam either, so for French, Chinese, and Spanish, it's called the STAMP exam, which stands for standard-based, standards-based measurement of proficiency, or the ALIRA test, which is only for Latin because it tests interpretive reading skills. So by taking one of those three tests, students were able to qualify for this award. And one of the things that I think is great about this program is it gives them quantifiable proof of what they can do with a language that they could use when applying to college, when applying for a job, maybe going to a study abroad program. It's something that they're going to be able to carry with them. I'm going to highlight for you a few of our program strengths. Again, I'll focus on the ones in bold. The first and most important one are our highly qualified staff. I am not exaggerating when I say that I really can't say enough about the teachers in this department. They are highly proficient in the languages that they teach, but also they're very skilled in the techniques that help students to acquire those languages. Just speaking a language isn't enough to make you a teacher. I speak English, but I think I'd be a terrible English teacher. You have to really know about how to get the skills of that particular language and make them accessible to students, and that's something our teachers are very good at. They also are extremely knowledgeable about culture, about music, literature, history, geography, of all the places where those languages are spoken. This means that they're able to make connections to their students that are really meaningful. Our teachers work hard. They're available for extra help. They go to conferences and take courses, and they are constantly trying to be better at what they do. They also go out of their way to provide those co-curricular opportunities that I talked about before that are so important for helping students to understand linguistic communities. We've got pictures here from the Latin Club. That's the pumpkin that is carved like a mythological monster. A trip to a Mexican restaurant. And at the top there, a photo from our Chinese exchange program this year. We had a group of students come from China to stay in Hingham for a few weeks and interact with our students. We've had teachers take students to Spain and to France and to Canada and to China, and all of those are things that they do because they want to. You know, they're not required, but they really go above and beyond to make those valuable opportunities available to our students. I think another important support of, important strength of our program, sorry, is the fact that it does so strongly support our mission statement and has some important cross-curricular applications. So I won't go into it in as much detail as I did in my written report, but learning a second language leads to a lot of cognitive benefits for students, particularly when it's learned at a young age. Students who learn a second language have better test scores. They have better memory function. They have improved reading skills in their first language as well as in their second language. Bigger vocabulary, better spatial abilities, and improved abilities to problem solve. Just to mention, you know, quickly, a few things. In addition, students are able to deepen their understanding of art, music, history, geography, a whole host of other things that they're learning about in other classes through their studies in the target language. So the pictures that I've added here are from a project that's done in Spanish for, where the teachers collaborated with the art department to learn about various forms of art. They teach the students about these various forms of art in Spanish. The students create their own art, and then they have to articulate what the message of their artwork is in Spanish. So they're not just learning, you know, I like this painting. They're learning how to talk about what art really means and view it critically as part of their foreign language studies. And again, by helping our students to develop proficiency in a second language, we're putting them on that pathway for success as local and global citizens. Another important strength of our program is the presence of our two language labs. We have one at the high school and one at the middle school, and these are really great tools for teaching a second language. It's important that students hear voices other than their teachers when they're learning a second language, and the lab really opens us up so that we are able to communicate digitally with people all over the world. Students get a chance to hear other people speak the language that they're studying. And it also allows the teachers to really effectively differentiate, give individualized feedback to students, and provide a lot of opportunities for speaking and listening practice. And another important strength of our program is the strength of our standardized test scores. Again, I went into a little bit more detail on this in my written report, but you can see that the standardized test scores, particularly the AP exam scores for foreign language are very strong. You'll notice that we didn't start giving the Chinese exam until a little bit later. The first time we gave it was in 2013, and there weren't enough students then to give us any useful data on how the kids did. But the scores across the board are very, very strong. Logically, you'd expect that the scores in Chinese and Latin are going to be a little bit lower than in French and Spanish because they have fewer years to study those languages, but the bar in terms of proficiency is still set in the same place. They have less time to get to the same level of proficiency. But even so, in all of the language exams that we have given, we are above the national averages. So I think that that's very impressive. This particular chart doesn't show Chinese because we weren't able to offer that course last year, but we can see that in French and in Latin and in the two AP Spanish courses, the standardized test scores are very good. All right. Concerns, this list is shorter. My first concern is time for collaboration. At the high school, all of the teachers have common planning time by language. And this really allows them to work together, to develop common lessons, common assessments, to talk about student success in a meaningful way. But unfortunately, that's a lot harder to do at the middle school and at the elementary school. At the elementary school, I'm not sure that there's any way around it because the teachers are physically in four different buildings. But at the middle school, I think that it would be very beneficial for teachers to have common planning time by department. I think that it would help them to plan more consistent lessons and to develop common assessments, which are important for us to use to analyze how students are doing. My next program concern is about technology. I said before that we have two language labs, and they're wonderful. We benefit greatly at the high school from the presence of a lab coordinator. She is able to help us to troubleshoot technical issues, to serve as our liaison with the software company, and to really help teachers to use all the functions of the lab to their highest capacity. I think that having a lab coordinator at the middle school would help us to similarly use the middle school lab to its full potential. And it would also help us to prevent damage to the lab. The way that the lab is set up, the teacher is stuck in one place at the front of the room, which means that sometimes you get kids, you know, pulling on cords or poking at keyboards, and it's very difficult to monitor that kind of behavior. We've done a few things that I think have helped with that over the last couple of years, but I still think that having a full-time lab coordinator at the middle school would help us to use that space to a better benefit. And lastly, I told you that our elementary Spanish program allows for students to have, generally speaking, one period of Spanish per six-day cycle. And that's incredibly valuable because it's still providing a great basis for future learning. It's developing those transferable skills that kids are going to be able to apply to other disciplines and developing those cultural understandings that are so important. Our elementary teachers do an amazing job with the time that they have. But I think that if they had more time, they could do even more incredible things. This, you know, hour per six-day cycle, it's actually more like 40 minutes, is not enough to really build a lot of proficiency. And if we had more time, I think we'd see greater results. So that takes me to future directions, and the very first future direction has to do with elementary school. FLES stands for the, stands for Foreign Language in Elementary Schools. And I think, as I mentioned, building proficiency takes a lot of time. And I recognize that there aren't more minutes in the day, especially not at elementary school. There are a lot of mandates on every minute of kids' time. But we also know that building proficiency takes a lot of time and that our youngest students are the ones who will cognitively benefit the most from early language learning. So what I would suggest as a way to get around the lack of extra minutes in the day would be to look at a program that's called Content-Based FLES. Again, FLES is Foreign Language in Elementary Schools. What this would mean would be to look really carefully at our existing curriculum in the elementary schools for areas where it would be possible to, for Spanish teachers to collaborate with classroom teachers. So we have currently sort of a pull-out model where kids go to a specialist, they go to Spanish class, and they leave their classroom teacher. I think that it might be beneficial to also add sort of a push-in model where the Spanish teachers visit the regular classroom and collaborate with the teacher. So for example, our kindergarten Spanish students learn about colors. And I'm sure that they also learn about colors in art, right? So is there a way that we could integrate the learning of Spanish and art and do practice together? Therefore, increasing the amount of time that kids have to learn Spanish without taking time away from other things. It would require that we look really carefully for appropriate places to integrate this kind of teaching. My other future directions include improving and increasing our use of data to really analyze what our students are learning and improve our instruction as we can. We are working on the process of developing common assessments for our courses, which will tell us where our students are struggling, what they're doing really well at, and help us to adjust instruction so that all of our students do better. We will, of course, continue to analyze the results of the AP exam data and data from the STAMP and ALIRA tests that I mentioned earlier that are used to qualify for the Seal of Bilinguality. And finally, another future direction is to do more community outreach. I mentioned in the video that I think I'm very lucky to work in a community where people value learning a second language. But I think that there's always more that we can do to interact with our community right here in Hingham. So I'm looking at ways that we can increase elementary enrichment, particularly at the elementary level through World Language Week, which is celebrated every year at the elementary schools. This year, our food services director, Kim Smith, did a great job of organizing an international menu for the schools that week to go along with the international lessons that kids were receiving in class. But I would like to look for ways to build on this and expand on the opportunity for students to learn about other cultures at the elementary level. At the middle school, we're looking at developing an international night. We'd like to invite families to celebrate the cultures that students are learning about and also share their own cultural backgrounds. I think that there are people here in Hingham who bring with them their own unique cultural heritage, and we'd like to invite them to share. And at the high school, we're hoping next year to develop foreign language national honor societies. So those would be connected to the, there's a national group for each language that we offer at the high school. And I think that by offering an honor society at the high school level, it gives us another opportunity to celebrate what our kids are doing and also to get them involved in communities because honor society is always involve community engagement. I would also like to continue to offer those opportunities that I spoke about earlier for students to engage with target language communities, either through trips abroad, through field trips, or through exchange programs. Earlier this year, we had a very successful exchange program with a group of students from China, and I would love to discuss with the committee the possibility of carrying out a two-way exchange where we would send our students to another country to live with families for a short period of time because I think it can be a really valuable experience in understanding another language and culture. So it's something I'd like to discuss a little further. So in conclusion, I'm very proud of the work that the Foreign Language Department is doing. It's an incredible group of teachers who are doing an incredible job to teach some pretty fantastic kids. And I look forward to continuing our work together in the years to come. Thank you.
Very impressive. Thank you, Erica.
Are there any questions I can answer for you?
I have a few questions.
Okay.
So you, one of your concerns was having a foreign language coordinator, is that the title?
A lab coordinator.
A lab coordinator.
So like a technology person.
Right.
We did have that in the original budget this year.
Yeah, we thought that was. My question, though, was the use at the high school and the use at the middle school, are they fairly similar? Or would you say at the high school, the language lab gets used more frequently? And just to have a kind of picture of the...
I would say that the amount of time is probably similar, as in both of the labs are used most of the time. But I definitely see a difference in the way that they're used. I think that the high school teachers, and this is not any, no intended criticism of the middle school teachers, they simply don't have access to the same resources of having somebody to help them troubleshoot, to help them figure out new things to do. And so they're a little bit more limited in what they can do with the lab because they don't have the same kind of support that we have at the high school.
And then other, how many, I'm just kind of curious, because it starts with Spanish, and then the kids get to choose between Spanish and French, and then when they get to high school, they get to choose from the four languages. How many kids actually leave Spanish? Would you say, so in middle school, half go to French and half go to Spanish? And then how many, I'm just curious, at the end of the, you know, by the senior year, the kids that continue with a language, how many are still doing Spanish?
So Spanish continues to be the largest program, and it makes sense that it would be because we have the elementary program, and a lot of students see the value in continuing with that once they get into middle school. The middle school, the split is about two-thirds Spanish to about a third of French. And then when it comes to high school, I don't know that there's any discernible trend as to whether there's more former Spanish students or more former French students going to Chinese and Latin. I think it's a fairly even split.
Okay, just kind of curious what kids are into nowadays. Chinese is amazing. I don't think we had that when we were going to school. And then the STAMP/ALINA test, is that recognized worldwide?
Worldwide, I couldn't tell you. One of the benefits of those particular tests is that they're aligned with that proficiency scale the American Council for the Teaching of Foreign Languages uses. And so that makes them fairly, even if someone isn't familiar with that specific test, it makes the results easily understandable to anybody who's familiar with that proficiency scale. I can tell you that ALIRA and STAMP are both very widely used in the United States. They are the primary tests that are used for Seal of Bilinguality testing across the country. I think there's 22 states now that have Seal of Bilinguality legislation in place, and the majority of those schools use either ALIRA or STAMP.
Okay. The reason why I ask is because I actually, I'm a fan of German. German was my major. I lived in Germany for 12 years. And when I, I took a test, it was with the Goethe Institute. And you might be familiar with that institution. I'm sure French, Latin, they all have one. I'm not, I don't know the details. And so I did take an exam, and it's recognized world. That's why I was asking. I was wondering if any of our kids do that kind of exam. It's great. So if I applied for a job, let's say in London or in New York, and I said I took this exam, it would be recognized literally worldwide, and people anywhere in the world would recognize what kind of standard that test is. So I was just curious if you've looked into any of that.
So part of what led to selecting those particular tests has to do with the fact that they are, and I can't speak specifically to the German test. I can speak more to the Chinese test. There's a very similar test in China. There's a very similar test in China. If I were to go and I wanted to get a job in China, I would take the HSK test. And the HSK test, again, I can't speak to the German one, is not really a proficiency test. It's based on a very specific set of parameters and even a very specific vocabulary list. So the test that you use for a Seal of Bilinguality needs to be a proficiency test, which means that it needs to be fairly open-ended. And one of the things that's nice about these two tests is that they're computer adaptive tests. So students took them, they take them in our language lab. If you answer a question correctly, it gives you a harder level question. If you answer it incorrectly, it gives you a lower level question. So it's able to, a lot of the international proficiency tests are, you take, for example, HSK Level 1, HSK Level 2. This is one test that covers all the bases.
All right. Well, thank you.
No problem.
I have a couple of questions. On the Seal of Bilinguality, I was just curious, how many, do you know how many kids passed that test who were not taught the language by Hingham High School or not taught at a, at an AP level or...
So as for not taught at Hingham High School, not many. But I'm hoping that we can get more students. I know that those students are there.
Yeah.
But I think a lot of them didn't know that this opportunity existed this year. So one of my goals for next year will be to get some of those kids on board and do testing in other languages. Another advantage of the STAMP test is that it's available in dozens of languages, so there's lots of options. The test takers this year were pretty evenly split between juniors and seniors. Some of them were kids in AP classes in their senior year, and some of them were kids in, you know, upper standard or honors junior-level classes.
Oh, that's great. Yeah. Because it, you know, it's an opportunity for, make it available to all students and showcase a skill that, that might not come out by the rigor of the class that they're in, but give them that one-up on their future.
I think a lot of the students who took the test were pleasantly surprised by how well they did. And I think it was a real confidence boost for those students to see that what they had learned was really getting them someplace.
Yeah. I'm really excited that you introduced it because I think it's, you know, going in the future. Then another comment I had on your community outreach. On the Foreign Language National Honor Societies, it crossed my mind that the students who will be eligible for that would also be involved with the National Honor Society and faced with a very large load. And if adding on an additional community service requirement, and I'm sensitive to social emotional learning.
Absolutely.
Especially in the later years and when they're at that high level of pressure and classes. So if we can keep that in mind for the students and not overachieve them.
No, I think that's an excellent point.
It's, it's wonderful, but I am cognizant of the demands on them and their time.
The qualifications for being eligible for a foreign language honor society are not exactly the same as, there will definitely be overlap, don't get me wrong, but they're not exactly the same as the qualifications for the National Honor Society. I think we would also like to, so community service is part of it, but part of what we'd also like to measure away from, because kids are doing service, like you say, through the National Honor Society. We'd like to look at instead measuring community engagement. So participating, for example, in activities that are language-related.
Right.
At the school or in the local community, I'm hoping would be a slightly less stress-inducing way to keep kids involved.
So that, my follow-up on that is, how would it integrate with the requirements of the Global Citizenship Program? Because that has become very popular, very successful, and engages all language students and not just the top-level students, and gives them an opportunity to participate in something they enjoy. Even if they're, you know, don't have the academic ability to achieve at such a high level. And on that, too, having your middle school international night might be an opportunity to introduce those families to the Global Citizenship Program.
That's a great idea.
So that there's a look forward of the next step of, you know, what they could do when they get to high school.
Yeah.
Have a captive audience.
Absolutely. That's great to consider.
And I would like to thank you and all your teachers for the tremendous work you do. My children have, you know, excelled with their languages and enjoyed it. They weren't top AP students, but I even have one who's a language major in college and thriving with that. And so it's the inspiration from the experience at Hingham High School that kept them going at it. And that speaks to the staff and how engaging they are. So I thank you for everything you bring to the community.
Thank you. It's wonderful to hear.
It's really wonderful.
Carlos?
Hey, foreigner, and speak of other languages. I appreciate very much what your department does. Can you just elaborate on your goal to introduce the exchange program? I mean, you don't have any program right now where the kids go and stay with other families at this moment?
We don't. In the past, when we have proposed exchange programs like this, we've occasionally run into issues with concerns about safety. But I don't, I think that, you know, the landscape of international exchange has changed even over the last ten years, where we would have the capability to do pretty in-depth background checks on families that our students were going to stay with, which maybe wasn't the case in the past, but would be the case now. I know that when I participated in international exchange programs in high school, I am sure that there were no background checks. But that's something that's very reasonable to expect now. So I just, as someone who benefited greatly from that kind of a program myself, I think it's wonderful to put kids really in the middle of using a second language to communicate.
And what is the timeline, I mean, how long you envision that this would be happening? Thirty days?
I think probably in the range of two weeks.
Two weeks? Yeah. I mean, I see that a lot of students are actually taking a gap year to go overseas, whether it's Latin America or Africa, just to sort of like expose themselves to, you know, other languages out there. And they can actually learn hands-on by doing it. So you have my support, and then let's see if we can do something.
When we brought the students from China here this winter, when they left, they immediately started to ask, well, could we have your students come and stay with us? Like they would, that particular school would love to have a two-way exchange program. And it's definitely something I'd like to pursue.
Thank you.
What support does your department need to get more common planning time for, at the elementary level and especially at the middle school?
So at the elementary level, we have made use of workshop time. So we'll get subs sometimes for the day or for part of a day to get all the teachers together in the same place. And so I'm not sure that I could envision, again, because of the geographic distance between them, a better solution for that. At the high, at the middle school level, it's about how the schedule is built. And so while I have made recommendations, I guess, about what I hope that people will teach, I, I don't, I guess I'm not sure that I know the answer.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone.
All right. Oh, Dotson's your computer back. I'll give her a sec. Thank you, Erica. All right. We will move to new business 6.2 to hear an end-of-the-year fiscal year 18 operating budget closeout forecast and act as appropriate. So John, are you taking that?
I am.
All right. You're on.
So the, this is a budget update and forecast for the end of, up till the end of fiscal 18. And basically with the forecast, what we did is that May 31st, took a snapshot of the numbers of what the budget looks like with all the spending. In addition to that, we have a number of encumbrances. And so you have the, the actual spending that's taking place, plus the encumbrances of the money that's reserved. And then we review all those encumbrances and try to make our best determination of whether those will be spent as they're encumbered or reserved, or whether they'll go up or whether they go down. And so we make a number of adjustments to the encumbered amounts in order to come to a forecast of what we believe spending will approximate by the end of the year. Even, you know, we have better information now than we did at mid-year, simply because time has elapsed and we're closer, we get better payroll information, we have more expenses in, so we're in better shape. And, but still, between now and the time the budget finally closes out in October, there still will be a lot of changes. So what I'm forecasting right now is basically a even budget, where I'm showing a negative $17,000 after all the adjustments that we made, which at this point in time is basically a balanced budget. The, as we proceed through the end of June, we'll have a number of other encumbrances that will sort of close out, we'll get, so that basically when encumbrance closes out, what that means is that someone put a requisition in for a purchase. That purchase took place, but may not have taken place in total, okay? Could have taken place partially. Maybe it could not be fulfilled. Maybe the product changed, it was no longer available by the time the vendor actually got the order and processed it. Because lots of times, they're planning these things well in advance, right? We did the budget for 19, and we started in October. So as they're coming through their budget numbers, they're getting quotes and all this information relative to what they think their plan is going to be for the next year. And then they issue the purchase order, and something might have changed. Often happens in like, you know, for textbooks. There's also supplies and materials that go on, and they say, I'm going to need all of these. But just because they say they're going to need all of these, I say, buy those as you need them. So, you know, they get, sometimes those orders get tempered down. There may be an open purchase order that says, I have $5,000 worth of supplies, but not $5,000 comes in. Maybe, you know, $2,500 or $3,000 or $4,500. There's a 525 accounts, and any account, most accounts have purchase orders against them. If, if the, if the accounts don't have anything against them, I don't see it on my list of 525. Everything in that 525 has some monies. The chart of accounts has more than 525 accounts. So I just go through that to sort of give you an idea of how the forecast is actually put together, okay? So you look at, you know, if you think, picture it as three columns. One column is, is what your budget is, the other is the actual year-to-date expended, and the, the next one is the encumbered funds, the reserve funds. And of course, the net of those equals what your available balance is. So looking through the budget, there's, we're just about even. And, you know, for the highlights, what I see is, you know, there's some significant overspending in special education, significant overspending in maintenance, and significant overspending in heat. But some of the heat was sort of offset by electricity. Now, the special education, two, two lines particularly. One is the instruction was up 231, which is primarily contract services. And then also, special education transportation was overbudgeted by 232. And that's largely a function of really underbudgeting over the past couple of years. I've underbudgeted that number. And, you know, actually, this year, we've increased it to try to like catch up some of that gap. And so the, now, there's, there's, it's just really a function of being underbudgeted. Maintenance, we would do all our maintenance projects, the winter spending, the repairs. We might have, you know, items such as the netting at the high school, or boiler may break down, that's sort of not budgeted for, and we're not using capital funds for it. And then with the heat, you know, if you recall, back in January, we had a real killer couple of months. It was a very, very cold winter. So our heat, in terms of our natural gas bills, actually were significantly overspent. But we did benefit a little bit from the electricity. During the budget process, you may have recalled, Mary said, I think your electricity's still high. But I didn't have any good information on the electricity. I think as the years progress now, what I see in electricity is, we do benefit from most of the schools, except for Plymouth River is much, much higher. And I think that's a function of the way the new rate structure actually goes, is the demand index. And since Plymouth River is an all-electric school, their demand spikes are always going to be there because it's electric, and that actually raised their bill. But, you know, with the benefit of electricity, we did, the, the offset for the overspending in heat or total utilities was, was somewhat minimized. The summary that every, you have, if, you know, in the summary, there's, what we have is our basic budget structure. And for the large items that appear there, I put a little notation to, so you can see, you know, where the overspending is. One thing to note when you look at this information is that in the budget, there was a very large allowance for collective bargaining agreements. Those monies have now actually flowed into the individual departments, which will basically show them as a negative variance of the budget. But there is a big offset in the budget in this sheet where you see a positive variance for that allowance. It's just, it's just not practical or possible really for a forecast to sort of move that money into the appropriate buckets and, and be anywhere near reasonably, you know, figured out on where the spending might be. The, back in February, when we did the first forecast, I did see, you know, as we did the, the forecast, we noticed it was negative back then as well. Okay? So what I did this year was I sort of closed purchase orders earlier, about a month earlier. And I basically put a message out to the field saying, you know, close all your purchase orders, get them all in, you know, it'd be essential spending only. If anybody needs anything, then, you know, contact me or sort of ask me before you would do that. That spending typically would relate to the, the field. It can't really relate to maintenance because if something breaks, you have to get it fixed. It can't really relate to special education spending because if you have to provide the service, you have to provide the service. Although we still watch all the things, but we really don't do anything that's sort of discretionary. So I think that actually helped us pull back a little bit so that we could, you know, have reserve, not reserve funds, but make up for the deficit that might have occurred if we continued spending at that pace. And so as you go through a number of these items, and I'm happy to answer questions about anyone or talk about anyone, but, you know, I'm not going to go through the individual ones, you know, right now, or else I'll keep you here for about another hour, and everybody's eyes will glaze over eventually. But I'm happy to, you know, so I did get this in Friday, so hopefully people had a chance to take a look at it. I'm happy to answer any questions about the individual details. And the other thing, too, is I might say that, so we, as we close out the year, some of those purchase orders will drop off. I see a negative right now, but I'm really not worried about it because I do believe those purchase orders will, will drop off. I believe some funds will become available. I don't think they're going to be really significant large items where the school committee would say, oh, let's go do this $50,000 or $60,000 project, or let's do this project. I don't think there's any of those out there that we can say with confidence at this point right now. However, when we were, when we were doing the budget for capital this year, Long Range Planning Committee, we had, we started with a list of about $2.2 million worth of stuff. We worked it down to about 1.3 before we brought it to the Capital Outlay Committee. And when we got it down to that 1.3, we actually identified a number of projects that we said, well, maybe we could use year-end funds for that. Okay? And I provided in the detail for this packet, a few of those projects that could possibly done if some of that money drops to the bottom and we have it available. Also, we were talking about like HTSS. They have some supply materials. We deferred that from this year's budget, saying, we can do that with end-of-year funds. So I think that, you know, if monies do develop between now and the end of the year, that they, they certainly should be used for the HTSS because we expected anything we deferred, you know, it took out of the 19 budget to be done through end-of-year funds. And then as an alternative, the committee could decide to do. And then, as an alternative, the committee could decide to do one or more of the long-range planning ones, or, you know, the, as options.
All right. I do, I think Carrie and myself and Liza had some particular questions about some of the special ed costs.
Okay.
But we could also, I was thinking we could do maybe a deeper dive at our special ed subcommittee meeting, which is next Tuesday, on some of those. If, but, I mean, we could certainly talk about them now, too, but I might send you some
Sure.
other information that we might wanna have. But do you have questions you wanna ask now, Carrie, or anyone?
Just one, thank you for, as we were emailing today, 'cause I had some questions. The contract services, it's, in your memo, it says it was up three hundred and ninety thousand dollars for special ed, and then it was offset by some para and teacher savings. Is that, was that also over-budgeting, or under-budgeting, sorry, that it was up that much?
No, that, no, the contract services, that, those are, so, they, you know, there's a number of them, they have like ABA services, or we, you know, we may need, there could be a para services, there's home instruction, there's specialized services was up, then there's language services, specialized equipment, home hospital tutors, and also, then there's a contract that we have for ABA services. So those were just, and any given year, those can just fluctuate based on the services that are actually needed. We have a budget of about five hundred thousand dollars, and two hundred and ten thousand dollars of that is sort of offset in, by the IDA grant.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, you know, you see a net in the budget of about three hundred thousand, but this is on top of that. So it just is, there's a bunch of details that I have on the list and stuff, and they, it's, they're just the services that were needed for this year.
For this year?
Yeah.
Do you expect them to keep going up?
I'm not sure, Carrie, I think, I think it's, it's one of those, they, I think they can be altered, because special ed is just very fluid. Sometimes services are needed, sometimes they take back, sometimes they're, you know, there's a lot of things that get done. That doesn't say, there's nothing that says that will be consistently spending at that level. This is just, all special ed is sort of a point in time, and what you have for a mix, and what services are actually needed.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and it doesn't really have to do with tuitions, it's
Right.
really, you know, the actual services.
Yeah. Like, it would be good to take a deep dive in that in the meeting.
Yep.
Okay. As I was saying to Carrie earlier, that I think what will help is for us to have a discussion, and at the subcommittee would be a good place to have a discussion, about the contracted services, and what that is made up of. And some of it is spending that we know in advance that we're going to need. For example, in the area of speech-language, we have a number of staff employees who are speech-language. We have one school that doesn't have a staff member for that service, but we contract for the whole year in advance for that. So there's a contracted service, we know in advance, we budget for it, we know who it's going to be, and we plan ahead. But if you take the area of ABA, for example, we have a staff person, we budget certain other services that we know we're going to need, but then, there can be a student who moves in, or there can be a greater need for hours as IEPs might be revised during the year, amendments, that kind of thing. So when those costs pop up, we can look to the IDEA grant, knowing that they may be different from year to year, but there's a place to go. Typically, we know, when we start the year, how many one-to-one paras we will need, that's spelled out in students' IEP plans, but those plans can change over the course of the year, and we need to have somewhere to go. And that's why I always say that whatever the students need, we are responsible. But since we don't always know in advance what those needs are, having a grant like IDEA, where some of it is totally mapped out at the beginning of the year, is great, but having in those categories additional funding for contracted services, that could be a para in one year, and could be additional ABA in another, or home services in another, is really important to us. But I think that it's not something that we map out. What you see in the budget every year is the offset, and you never see what it's made up of. But we can go back and look at individual paras, and be able to quantify more, how much of it, for example, in the current year, is going to ABA, how much of it is going to speech-language, and particularly at this point in the year. So I think that's not something that we've ever done, is to take a serious look at, at the whole grant, and it amounts to nine hundred thousand to a million, and see what it looks like. And I think it's a great topic for a subcommittee meeting.
Yeah, I think it would be really helpful, if, if there's any way of anticipating what age the student is, and as they matriculate up, and is there some, any type of projection, because with a gap of this size, anything we can do to mitigate a potential gap in the future, I think, will help. It's very unpredictable, but
Well, I mean, we know who our kids are, and it's in their IEPs, and we'll take a look, it's good you're here. And we can take a look, and it, maybe the contracted services are the best way to go, but maybe it might make sense to have another, an additional BCBA in district.
Yep.
Or, so, it's, we have to get a good understanding of what we're paying for, and how we're paying for it, to see if it's appropriate.
I agree that, you know, it may be cheaper to, even though I know the town is concerned about adding personnel, but it may be more cost-effective
Right.
and better for the student to have a consistent provider than always contracting.
Yeah. Here I say, often when we build a budget, we're recommending, A, whatever it might be, an additional person, and this was funded in a prior year by
Yeah.
by the grant.
Yeah.
So that does happen from time to time. But when it's something that we don't know is going to continue from one year to the next, and we might need speech and language one year, and two more paras in another, we wouldn't make that decision, but we certainly have.
I wonder, John, is there any kind of, is there like a forecast model that you know of, that you can use for forecasting these types of expenses? Like, if you, if you know what your population is, and as they go through, are you aware of anything like that? Because if not, I'm gonna try to find out.
I'm really not aware.
Okay.
Not one for special ed. I mean, you know, we, in forecast, I mean, personnel, we schedule out.
Right.
You know, this is
But when the things come out of the IEP process, which is where many of these things come from, that can change within a year, let alone for a year.
Right.
You know, we schedule transportation out, too, right? So we know, they're not transportation. So now, that's, that's over-budgeted, too, right? And it's still fully encumbered. But what we do know is that between, like, when we put the encumbrance in, we take the schedule, and we put it by the number of days that's scheduled, and that's the total encumbrance, okay? Now, we know that some of the attendance has not been there. We've reduced the encumbrance somewhat to sort of account for that. But by the time the end of the year rolls along, there'll be even more, yeah, you know, and say that, that cutoff, that cutoff may be, okay, we, you know, that's not, the numbers are of the May thirty-first, but we may know where all the attendance that may go back to April, okay? Or, you know, April first, or something like that. So we may have three months of attendance from transportation, and, you know, students not attending, and we don't pay if they don't attend. So those encumbrances may come down more, it's just that from sitting in this seat at this moment, I can't tell you that. And I can't say that money will absolutely be available. But that's what happens at the end of the year, when the encumbrances get reduced, when you finally get closer, you sort of know what the total spending is going to be. You know, we'll get the final bills from the vendors, we'll find out when all the students were there, and, you know, and what days, and the records from the schools, and find out what days we should be paying for transportation. So that, it's over two thirty-two now, but it may come down a little bit. Just like a lot of those supply lines, or the other end of those fuel lines, they may drop like two hundred dollars, five hundred dollars, or a thousand dollars. You know, it's gonna, it will drop, I feel confident that it will drop, and that's why I'm negative now, so I'm not really concerned about it.
And some of the transportation costs can be impacted by just a single student, a single change in student, because we can pay up to three hundred dollars a day
And homeless goes in there, too.
in transportation for certain schools, depending upon where they, where they are. So, three hundred dollars a day, even for a school-year program of a hundred eighty-five days, let's say
Right.
that's a lot of money, and you wouldn't think of that as making that big a difference. It wouldn't take many changes to have that occur.
All right. Does anybody else have any other questions on the budget? Did you have anything for long-range planning, capital budgets, Ed, or Carlos? Okay.
Not tonight.
Not tonight? Okay. So, nothing to act on tonight regarding this operating budget?
No, nothing to ask on, the, you know, you, unless you wanna, you could go, say, a consentance about HTSS, or, you know, the other project, should some money develop? You know, because then, you know, the, the other projects that Long Range Planning, and I'm not sure if Long Range Planning members could speak if they would like, but, you know, the safety access door from the back garden for PRS, shades for the first floor, for the sun glare at the middle school, replace accordion walls with permanent structures at each, at PRS, and a portable floor overlay for the auditorium of the high school, and synchronized clocks for PRS, and actually building one nineteen, the building one seventy-nine has a loading dock that should be sort of repaved, it's falling apart. You know, that's a total of about fifty-eight thousand dollars, and I think we would prioritize those based on, you know, what type of available funds we have.
John, how much are you thinking for the HTSS materials? What, I mean, where are we?
We're talking about buying the teacher materials.
Right, yeah. No, I know what it is, but
Right.
what dollar figure are you looking at?
Yeah, you know, I thought that was fifty-two hundred dollars. But I thought there were a couple of, I thought there were a couple of other, like, one-timers that were in that budget, that I just could not recall Friday, when I was writing this, and I did, did all of this Friday, so I don't have, you know, every one of those items, but there might be a few items from, that we should buy this year to support next year's budget. But I think the HTSS, like, that one specifically, I do remember, and I think it was about fifty-two hundred dollars.
I personally would like to look at it the next meeting, so maybe you'll have a closer sense, and
Yeah, we probably won't be able to get the projects going, I mean, you know, actually, we might be able to get a couple of them encumbered, so, we could do that.
Just an, that makes it enough time to get what we need by the closeout of the books?
Well, the, it's, well, it's, it makes it harder to, if money develops, it makes it harder to spend the money, because you're too close, you know, very close to the end, and, you know, there's other work to be done, you know, versus like, as soon as you just sort of know, okay, hey, this has dropped off, or like, you know, we're working with maintenance now, saying See, maintenance has a lot of open purchase orders as well, okay? And their purchase orders, they open the purchase orders, and then they tend to do purchase orders as they do projects. They open the purchase orders and get those approved, because they need authorization to do a purchase. So we do an open purchase order, that gives them the ability to like, call in a vendor immediately when we need something, because they can't wait a week between the time they may need a repair and getting a vendor in, right? They have to get the work done. So we open, open purchase orders to be at the start of the year, so they have the authorization to call the vendor in, and then as the project gets, when they get the vendor in and get the quote, they may issue another purchase order. So sometimes we get a little bit overstated in maintenance purchase orders, so we're in the process of closing those out, even though we've closed a lot out already. But there's, you know, there's millions of dollars being spent, so it's, you know, it's not like, you're not with a little accounting pad, and you're like, making check, you know, there's not somebody there to do, hey, it's five dollars here, it's a hundred dollars here, you know?
Right.
It's done at a much larger, higher level. So it's, so the, the only point is, is that the closer we get to the
What are you asking them to do?
Huh?
What are you asking them to do? Sounds all clear.
Right, so, to the extent, I mean, if you, the, I know you want another readout, but I mean, if you maybe would prioritize a couple of these, and then I could give you a readout, that could be helpful. You know, like, with HTSS, if you, if you could say yes to HTSS, and then if any of these projects you like, then we could do them, otherwise, we can wait till the eighteenth.
All right.
And we, and we may amend it, then, you know.
Well, I would say my first priority would be the HTSS materials, and then, my only project on this capitalist is the, since it's a safety issue, and we've been talking about safety, is the access door for the staff room to the back garden at Plymouth River. If that is real, a need of making sure the building is safe exit access in an, in an emergency, if that's the safety that's being noted.
That, that's, that's what was, that was, what was noted. I mean, you know, and I would ask the Long Range Planning Committee, too, if, you know, they would agree.
That's my personal, my two priorities, but, no, it's fair.
John, subject to available funds and an amount up to? The HTSS thought is from the operating budget, which at this point is balanced, or
Well, it's balanced because
Minimum.
we deferred the HTSS expenditure to be managed, hopefully, at the end of the year.
But the five items in, one, two, three, four, the six items in prior, they're, they're on, they're the capital side, correct?
Well, they, they're on, they were on the capital, Ed, and if you recall, we deferred them, Carlos, you remember, we said, you know, "Let's take those off the list, and let's throw them on a separate list." So I just brought up this, I just looked into the Long Range Plan, and I brought up this separate list to suggest that that may be an option for spending.
Yeah.
You know, the, you know, as we, when we were talking about capital, so, the, I don't think we, I don't even think we have them in the budget anymore, I thought we dropped them on the budget, or we may have deferred them a couple of years, and we put them on this list. So
So what would we wanna do here?
Does anyone else have any other items that they wanna prioritize, or is everyone sort of agreement that HTSS, everyone, yes, agreement on?
Can you explain what HTSS is, please?
Oh, sure.
I can, if that would be easy, Michelle. So, part of next year's budget was the rollout of a multi-tiered model of social emotional supports for all of our students in pre-K through twelfth grade. In the budget development, we made a total request of X dollars, and I apologize, I wasn't prepared for this comment.
Thirty-five thousand.
About, look at these two. About thirty-five thousand, which we couldn't, in order to balance the budget, we looked more closely at that request, and looked at those items which were one-time dollars, right, that we could spend X amount and have them, versus ongoing annual costs that would have to really be represented in the ongoing operating budget. So there, to the tune of roughly five thousand and change, are what we need for the fall, which we, sort of, in terms of balancing next year's budget, committed to buying with surplus funds this year, those materials that would support the rollout for next year, if that makes sense.
They would be the teacher materials.
It was a little unclear, but that's, it's more of the teacher kits and materials that would be a one-time purchase, right, that we could buy this year with any surplus funds from the operating budget, which we cut to balance next year's operating budget.
And then my next question is, where do these priorities come from already? The end-of-year priority, one, two, three, four, five, six?
When, when we were looking at capital with the Long Range Planning Subcommittee, there's, we had a big list of capital items, and these were, items were on the capital list to actually request from the town, but we had to continuously pare that list down, because we started at two million.
And at that time, you prioritized them?
At that time, we pulled these projects out, and we stuck a priority number beside them. As possible, as possible projects that if we had end-of-year funds, that we may bring forth to the committee, so I'm just resurfacing them, that's all.
So the committee actually already prioritized
The Long Range Planning Committee
Long Range Planning Subcommittee, apologies. Did. Already prioritized the, yeah.
That's right.
And we can discuss this a little more further tomorrow at the meeting.
Sure.
And, you know.
Thomas? John, I have one other budget question.
Hmm?
The, is, has there been any thought to the money that the schools received from the cannons, the sixty-five hundred dollars of where that's going? The sixty-five hundred dollars of where that's going?
I haven't seen the check. I, the, I would, I would think, um, I know that there is sixty-five hundred-
So, once we get the check, then we can?
Yeah, I mean, if, if it's an athletic gifts, I would be inclined to put it in the athletics gift account so that it could be used for, you know, repurchasing, purchasing athletic, uh, you know, we, we, that, that account, we've sort of like, when we sold those sales boats, we put that into the athletics gift account, okay? So, that when the PTO or the boosters for sailing bought a boat, we could contribute those funds back to the boat because the boats were bought by gifts to begin with. I mean, if it's a town asset, we wouldn't do that, but, um, you know, there's, there's, um, times when there's money to, that are given for the athletic program. And as opposed to going into the athletic revolving account, which is used for operating, it can go into an athletics gift account and it can be used for, you know, purchasing those types of assets that are, you know, for really gifts. We get a lot of gifts. Now, we had the pole vault that was a gift and we had the, um, you know, the, uh, the sailboats were a gift and the rowboats, uh, rowing boats are gifts. So, there's a, and actually, I think when we did the pole vault, I think that the gift wasn't enough, but there was money actually taken out of that gift account to sort of even subsidize that. There's not much in there. I mean, we're talking about a few thousand dollars, you know?
Is there any update on that one million dollars for Plymouth River, um, as a result of the new buildings coming up?
Uh, I haven't, I haven't got any update on that.
I think we, I think we should follow up on that to see if we-
We usually would talk about that at the forecast meeting, when the forecast meetings would come up. Because, I mean, it would be difficult to do anything with that now anyways, Carlos, you know? I mean, that, everything will come around again.
That's something we should, um, talk to the selectmen about because they've started construction there.
That's right.
And that's what we were waiting for, for that development agreement to be implemented. Um, so, maybe we can find out from the town administrator, maybe you guys can talk to Tom Mayo that has that development agreement been implemented, yeah?
Collect the money.
Thank you.
All right, so do we have consensus that we want to, I don't know, appropriate's not the right word, I don't think, but that we're in support of purchasing the HTSS materials now, given, to get that going? Yes, we are in consensus for that? Okay. I don't think we need a formal vote or a motion, which is-
Do you need a formal vote?
Do you need a formal vote?
No, I don't think so. I mean, it's not, it's not a big item. I just, it's a, that, that's, I mean, that's good, so.
Yeah, okay. All right, great. Thank you. Okay. Anything else on the budget?
No, that's it. Unless you have more questions.
No, we're good. All right, great, thank you. Um, six point three, to discuss leasing another bus for Metco use and to act as appropriate. John, I think that's you as well?
Yes.
All right.
So, in, in the packet, there's, um, so, we had talked about this during the budget, during the planning session, you know, idea of, uh, trying to lease another bus so that we could take over the Metco run from First Student and, you know, that would result in, um, a, a, a cost savings to us and also allow us more flexibility and, um, pro, and, and in our opinion, provide a much better service to our students as well, okay? Um, and, you know, so, we, along with that, we, we continue to talk about that. Andrew, even though he's leaving, you know, he knew about that. We've done a lot of, we've checked with Metco and we can in fact drop a bus. We've checked with Cohasset and Cohasset is in fact interested in this idea as well. It would be basically cost neutral to them and they're happy to go along and they even said, you know, if, if, if things turn out to be a little more expensive, let us know and we may help out too because I think everybody will benefit from having the control of what that route is, um, sitting with us. So, we did get a, we got a quote from DATCO and I attached that, I put that into the packet too. This quote, however, is really for a purchased bus, okay? You know, similar to when we purchased the twenty-two buses with all the leases and the paperwork and the, you know, we're buying it and then they're gonna take it back. The, I, I really didn't wanna do that. What I wanted to do was get, take a, a, a lease right from DATCO so we didn't have to go through all that paperwork, which is, tends to be sort of onerous and takes a lot of votes and a lot of time. And actually, even if we were to purchase a bus now, it would be, um, it wouldn't be delivered until September, but by the time we get through the process of doing approval, it could be even later. So, we're talking to them about leasing one of their used buses. So, we, we see a price here of fourteen thousand. The trouble is a leased bus, a leased use, uh, a leased use, excuse me, a leased used bus will, will cost more. So, I mean, in my note, I said the fifty, up to fifteen thousand dollars, but my guess is that it's gonna probably be closer to seventeen thousand, seventeen to twenty range, which I think the economics for that still works because this economics is saying, you know, um, that we will have conservative savings of, say, sixty-eight hundred dollars. But, and it is very conservative, I mean, with the fuel costs and the, the driver and the benefit add-on and stuff, um, it's, it's really conservative. So, I think that, you know, rather than saying fifteen thousand, I think that I'd prefer to have like up to eighteen thousand dollars to enter, to, to a bus lease. I think that was, uh, I think our athletic bus ran about fourteen or fifteen thousand dollars. And Patrick just gave me this information this afternoon, that they, they wanted more and I said, you know, why? And he said, well, you're gonna put more miles on the bus. And I said, well, there's no saying, there's not, no saying we're going to use that bus. We just need another bus. We have twenty-two buses and, you know, we wouldn't be using one single bus to do it. We would be alternating the buses, perhaps use one bus with low mileage one year, you know, take that, put that onto a little route, then take another bus for the next year. So, we're still working on the price, but I think that, I put fifteen thousand in my, you know, my request not to exceed, but I'd like to increase that if the committee would allow, um, us to increase it. And I do believe, I do, do believe the estimate's conservative. I think that we'll achieve much better results than what this shows, but this shows a worst-case scenario. So, if you, even if you went up to like the twenty thousand, the six thousand, we'd, we'd still make eight hundred and twenty-six dollars, but I think we'll do better than that.
So, you, you would like authorization for up to twenty thousand?
I would like that, yes.
Um, I'll take, comment questions.
Well, I, I just have a, a thought, something that I've talked to several people in the room previously. When we have the buses that do highway, uh, travel, it, it seems to me that those buses, whether they're athletic trips or in this case, dedicated trips in and out of Boston, those buses are gonna be on the highways as opposed to coming down Gardner Street or making a turn on to Main Street in Hingham. And I, I would like to suggest that we seriously consider getting some of these buses equipped with seatbelts. Now, John, you and I have talked about this, uh, for, for the newer members on the committee. The first, First Student, first, the, the series of buses that we had from First Student were not really equipped to be retrofitted with seatbelts simply because the framing on the buses. But the buses that we have now are all ready to, ready to be, to be installed. So, I'd, I'd like to, I'd like us to think about having seatbelts on, on the appropriate buses. And whether it means we have a dedicated bus, well, then, figure out how we can have somebody in maintenance rotate those every month or so, if, if you don't wanna have a dedicated bus.
Yeah, well, I, I, I mean, you know, I, I thought you'd mentioned that to me and I saw your email and I mean, I think that if we were to try it, you know, for the Met, for the Metco bus, that that would not necessarily be a bad idea, you know, because it is on, it is on the highway.
Good place to start.
And so, you know, with these buses, so there's thirty-three seats on a bus, okay? It needs to outfit each one with a seatbelt of a hundred bucks. So, it's thirty-three hundred dollars to outfit a bus, okay? But if we were, you know, the cycling plan, Ed, you know, Patrick said, well, I could cycle these on a quarterly basis. I could cycle them on a monthly basis, you know, but the, when you think about what we're doing to limit the mileage, they probably don't even have to be cycled on that type of basis. They could probably be cycled on a yearly basis. You know, if I'm doing fifteen thousand locally and the Metco's gonna be twenty-six thousand, I could take one net, one of our buses that's doing eight thousand now or nine thousand miles, say, okay, that's the Metco bus for next year, then I could take that off and then I could cycle another one in, you know? So, I don't think, Patrick would, would talk about rotating quicker, but we could probably, we could probably manage it, um, you know, on an annual basis, except for there will be times when that bus goes in for repair. And then it would not be practical to, you know, take off those belts to move it into another to take the bus out to repair. So, then there would be some times when they wouldn't be with seatbelts. You know, but, uh, you know, by and large, I think that, I, I do think with the highway that it's not necessarily, um, a bad idea, you know? I think that-
What's a, what's a reasonable, uh, thought on your part about the, the maintenance? All buses, all equipment needs to be maintained. How often did the buses go in and how often are they off? And how, how long are they offline?
Um, they, well, we have twenty-two and that's really, we, you know, we actually twenty-three because we have the athletic bus now, okay? But at any given point in time, one's out for several days. At least one's out for several days, yeah. You know, because they'll go in for, they're going in for oil changes, right? So, it's gonna, it's going to be offline. It'll go out for an oil change, it'll go out for inspection. I mean, it's, there is a, there's definitely a logistical, you know, transfer of getting a bus to a location. If, if you do have a problem, it could go out and it could go out for a week, okay? Because if, we do stuff locally down with, um, down, uh, right in Jackson Square.
Allmay, yeah.
Thank you, yes. So, you know, with Allmay. But if we have like a major repair that's sort of a vendor item, it ends up going to Norton to, um, to DATCO's location in Norton. Because we have the five-year extended warranty on them. So, sometimes there may be a problem with a sensor or a deaf thing and that's a DATCO thing because it's sort of like, it's not proprietary, but it's really a dealer-type item. So, that bus may have to go to Norton. And, you know, that could be, that could be a few days.
If you'll pardon the bad pun, since I'm hitting green lights, would we consider now leasing a new bus with seatbelts and spending thirty-three hundred dollars in equipping a second bus?
Well, then, so, then you decide, like, you know, with, I, I hear what you're saying, okay? But now who's gonna be riding with the seatbelts and where are you gonna require it? You know, it just sort of, I, I, I do buy the Metco thing, um, but, you know, locally, I, I'm not really in favor of seatbelts, you know, the local.
Did Patrick give you any idea how long it, it's involved in taking and, and, uh, re, repurposing those from that bus to that bus?
Um, I saw how they-
Is that, is that something, is that a field installation?
Yeah, I think, I think that we could probably install them ourselves. I think our maintenance people could install them.
Then that answers.
But, you know, it would take time. I mean, if you lift up the seat, there's like clips. I don't know what the seatbelt actually looks like, but, you know, when we asked the question, they lift up the seat, say, yeah, it's framed for it. So, I think what happens, you lift up the seat, there's some clip-ons and, you know, you just have to make sure they're safely installed.
So, John, uh, can you just explain again? In terms of why we're not concerned purchasing the bus instead of leasing?
Well, a, a, a couple, um, one reason is the, the first buses went through the, the, um, a, a sort of a, a lease, a five-year purchase lease and it took a lot of approvals going through the selectmen, going through the town, you know, it was for, for a very high amount of dollars, right, you know? And that, that whole process takes time, okay? You know, plus it's, it's a little bit onerous. Plus, the other thing too is, um, you know, we know that in three more years, we're gonna do, probably do another lease. Our lease, current lease is going to expire. I would like to wrap them all up in one lease instead of having like two different leases. Okay, now we have to close this one out and now we have to close that one out. All of that tends to be, uh, you know, a lot of work. Plus too, in some sense, my mind's saying, I wanna test this. I wanna make sure this works. So, when I go out for the new one, I could do the twenty-two or, you know, but the athletic seems to be working, right? So, most likely when we go out, we'll do twenty-three. You know, if Metco works, we'll, when, when that comes back in, we'd do twenty-four. You know, it is six of one, half dozen of the other. It just seems as though this would get us a bus immediately available for the start of the school year without having to go through a whole bunch of other town approvals, you know, on the item. And it's, it's not a real high-cost item, you know? And it, it should be a cost-neutral item, um, it, cost-neutral at a minimum. But, you know, my numbers here, I mean, the pays are gonna be pretty much, pretty close. You know, I think, we do think it's gonna be an eight-hour day, but the fuel's probably gonna be better. The maintenance is probably gonna be less. I mean, you know, there's, the, the benefits probably aren't really going to exist the way this says, um, you know, so I think that it's gonna be more beneficial than what the cost analysis actually says. But I wanna present a conservative picture.
Lisa?
I like Ed's suggestion of the seatbelts. I think we should do it with one bus because even if that one bus is out for a couple of days, it's just, we've never done it before. And so, you know, losing those couple of days for maintenance is good. But I do think we should take this opportunity to try the seatbelts because I've heard the legislature, if they haven't already voted, they're gonna be voting on requiring buses to have seatbelts. And I think this would be a really good experience for us to understand what the kids, how the kids handle the seatbelts.
I think it's good for the highway. I mean, I really do think-
And what does it take to retrofit the buses? I think there's a lot we can learn from this and it's a big safety factor for those kids. So, if we can, and if we can rotate the bus on an annual basis, I, I think that's, that's all positive. Um, I guess now, my question would be if we do this motion for up to twenty thousand and we wanna include the cost of the seatbelts, do you think, do we need to devote this at the next one until we get all the costs together? Or would this cover it or you wanna just do a supplemental vote later if you incur other costs?
I, I think that, I think that we could do the lease and then I think, you know, for a set of seatbelts, we can, I mean, we, we have budget money this year, you know, from, you know, the, the, the buses have, you know, they're offsetting a lot of that negative, uh, dollars. You know, it's about, I think, I did the cost before. I think it's ninety-eight dollars per seat. So, it's about a hundred dollars per seat. And, you know, with the thirty-three hundred dollars, we could wait a week and we could say, how's it going? Okay, let's get a set of seatbelts and then let's install them and we would use that for the Metco bus. Because I am, I am in favor of it for the highway. I think that it's not a bad idea for the highway. But, you know, it does get into a little bit of a slippery slope because then you say, now the field trips, right? But, you know, so, that's highway too, but this is every single day, you know, and, and, you know, I think, I think it's a good idea, a good idea to try them.
Yeah.
And I know about the legislature, um, you know, maybe it happens, maybe it isn't because I think it's been there before.
Yeah.
But, um, it's, I think this is a good application and a good reason for them.
Just for my clarification, how does the cost savings work with Cohasset since it's shared? What cost does Cohasset incur out of all of this?
Cohasset, Cohasset, so the way-
Are they riding our bus?
Yeah, the way the Metco runs work today is we have two buses and we're shearing those buses, Cohasset and Hingham. We have a secondary where there's the middle school and the high school people come, the students come together, both Cohasset and Hingham. And then we have the elementary. In the morning, the elementary students, the Cohasset and Hingham come together. And then Cohasset gets, um, in the afternoon, both Hingham and Cohasset, we take our own bus back, okay? Um, and we did that because Cohasset changed their times a few years ago and it cost us about another ten, fifteen minutes for the kids. And our kids were already waiting a half an hour and then they hit the highway, you know, at, at the wrong period of time and now their commute home's an hour and a half instead of, you know, what it would be now, an hour plus. They don't have that wait time. So, the kids actually get to go home, um, they get a better ride and they, they don't have the waiting time here. The other thing too, and so, and then we each pay for that piece, okay? But Cohasset and us, we've always been in this together, okay? So, you know, we, we said, here's the grant, we'll split all of these costs. So, each one of us is paying three hundred dollars in the afternoon for an afternoon bus and we're paying three hundred dollars for a morning run. By doing this, we'll have our, just our single cost and Cohasset will pay us the one fifty for the morning run as opposed to the, you know, paying for a student and that will help drive our costs down. And, you know, it'll, it'll work together. And it gives us the ability still in the afternoon, we have our own bus. If we want more flexibility with our kids- more flexibility with our kids, so they wanna stay for some family thing, our bus can take them home a little bit later. It just provides a whole lot more flexibility for us, instead of being scheduled by first student all the time, you know?
So the afternoon run for the Hingham kids, which would be fewer kids, because the Cohasset kids are not going back to Boston-
Correct.
Would be on this bus with the seatbelts?
Yes.
Ah.
Well, they'd be there in the morning too.
Yeah.
So, so in the morning, you picture, we're leaving our depot, we have to drive to Boston.
Right.
Okay, and then we'll do the Boston run, we'll drop our kids off, we'll go to Cohasset, drop them off. The bus will go back to the depot and then, you know, it'll pick up, pick up our kids at two-thirty, three o'clock, get right to the highway, and, you know, and it'll be our driver as opposed to first student. And Andrew, Andrew has talked about some service issues with first student. I just think we, we'll have better service, because it's our own service and we can kinda control it. And so they'll be on that seatbelted bus both ways.
Good.
And then our bus driver has to get back here.
Yeah.
Right? So that's where the, sort of, the eight hours comes in, right? They have to drive there, they have to come back, then they gotta drive, drive the kids back home, and then they gotta get back. Might be eight hours, might be a little less, but-
I'm gonna make a motion-
Thank you.
To allow the Director of Business and Support Services to enter a three-year bus lease with DATCO for an amount not to exceed twenty thousand dollars annually for three years, for a bus to use primarily for the Metco run. Do you have a second?
I'd like a second.
Great, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh. Well, we can have the seatbelt discussion in the discussion of the minutes.
Sure.
Or do we need to make a motion that, amend the motion to including seatbelt?
I was just gonna, not, not, I mean, I'll just, we'll just, we'll just do that. Operational, we'll just do that.
Okay, great.
We'll get it, we'll get it, we'll get a set of belts and we'll get them installed.
That's probably, okay.
No, no big deal.
All right, great. No, thank you, that is great. It's gonna be much better for the-
The only other top thing that comes to my mind is, do we need to have the rules be on how this is enforced?
Thank you.
Kids actually wearing the seatbelts, you know? Or anything like that?
No.
Well, okay, we do have monitor, there's a monitor, you know, the mon, the elementary bus has a monitor in the morning, and there's a monitor going back, so we can certainly make sure that they buckle up. And the monitor, we can make that part of the monitor's responsibility. The monitor that we take in the morning is, actually works in Cohasset. So that's a real good, that's a regular thing. She lives in Boston, we pick her up, and, you know, and she's been doing this for years. So, you know, that's, that's a good thing. And then, we, our monitor is, we have to, we have to get our own monitor, but we will absolutely make it part of the responsibility.
And also, this is such a wonderful thing to be doing, and the parents will be happy to hear it, I'm sure, if they put the message out to the parents, so that they can reinforce the kids, "Great, now we have seatbelts, you will put them on."
Right, yeah.
Parents, that's, that's a good thing, they're, they'll be happy to hear it.
I think on the highway, it's a good thing. You know, I mean, especially with this, this is a new venture for us, right? We're going to the town every day, on the highway, single, every single day, the same group of kids, so I think it's, I think it's a good, a good experiment.
Excellent, and we are moving on. Six point four, because my very short meeting tonight is getting very long. So, six point four, thank you. Do you receive a mid-cycle report on the superintendent's goals for twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen?
So the, the cycle for the superintendent goes from the evaluation in the fall through the coming fall, from November, last November, until this coming October. And at that point, prior to the superintendent's evaluation, there will be another update as to where we are on these, on these goals. There were five of these goals this year, and so I've given you some bullet points as to what's been accomplished, the actions taken, and I'm not gonna read over all of them, but I think we've made pretty good progress on, on all fronts, and some of the goals are closer than, than others. I would focus most on what next steps are remaining, at least of the things that were planned for the year. So, in goal number one, which was working with Jamie and CPAC and so on, to, to support the goals of the Special Education Improvement Plan, which were numerous, and was attending meetings and presenting a budget at the time of the budget presentations for CPAC especially, a separate budget, that we lobbied pretty hard to get restoration of the circuit breaker funds that were cut. And while we still don't have the final, 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 final budget, that we, we do expect that we're gonna be at full funding of that, which is a great thing. And we've offered numerous professional development, that we've enhanced the website, updated the Special Education Handbook and the Five-O-Four Handbook, and all of those things are on the website. So the things that are remaining are, of course, are to finalize the hiring of our new Student Services Director and facilitate for transition. Two, we're all looking forward to review and respond to preliminary findings from the middle school evaluator. We're gonna hear about the steps that were taken in the next week is the meeting.
Do we capture, but that's not gonna share results?
No.
It's just gonna talk about the process, I'm really clear.
What has been done. And to also, I've been doing some, some kinda independent discussion. One of the things that was brought up as part of the workflow plan was an interest in doing more for students with language-based disabilities, and, and in particular, very small number of students that continue to have, whose parents continue to have interest in explorations and partnerships and what, we had a meeting with a small group of parents, and one of the things that came up was that they believed that we had kind of a richness of resources in the area, in particular with schools like Landmark and Carroll, where we might look to get some ideas of things we could do that we're not now doing, and research that's going on and so on. And at the time, we were told that Carroll School was looking for some schools to pilot a program they were working with. And we called there immediately after hearing that, and it turned out that they, in fact, do not have need for a pilot person or school. We also found, subsequent to that process, that Carroll will not, will not be a stu, a DESC-approved school next year, so that we would not, if a student were to go there, they're going to have programs, they have two sites, but the, the local districts would not be able to fund students there. And so, in fact, they're exploring a whole new kind of programs called TCI Cognitive, Cognition Intervention. It's a technology-based program, but it's something worth looking at. Not because it's going to teach reading or any subjects where there are language-based issues in any different way, but it's looking at ways to strengthen other skills that the kids with learning-based disabilities have. So, we're continuing to follow that exploration. Carroll will continue to operate as a school, and they have come up with some private funding sources that they can help families with, so I wouldn't want anyone to think that they are not going to continue, but they will not be authorized by the state. And we, we do not have anyone, anyone currently at Carroll, so we don't have to be concerned about any student finding a different place to go. But at the same time, when we were exploring partnerships, I also came across a pilot program that's going on at Martha's Vineyard, a couple of schools at the middle school there. And again, it's, it's, it's a program that is specifically for students with language-based disabilities, but again, it's not focusing on their reading. It's really focused more on enhancing the many strengths that these children have. And there's a lot of research that shows they're very entrepreneurial. So this particular program, which was funded by a grant that was raised by a man in a swimming kind of a fundraiser, but anyway, he raised a grant that raised seventy-something thousand dollars to run this program over a two-year period. And because we should be interested in what kinds of new things are out there, I actually have my, my partner in, in research, it has a meeting with the, the man who originated the program and the man who is, raised the money to fund it in the next, I think it's the next, the eleventh, whatever day the eleventh is. So we're just continuing to explore these things. And the third thing is that, that I think that we should expand on, and that I've talked to Jamie about, is the outreach program that exists at Landmark. We've never used that program. And there are lots of components of it. One is that they have a lot of actual courses now that they offer, and they offer credit for those courses, for, for teachers who may be interested to take privately through Fitchburg State, so teachers can be motivated to take the course because they've got credit. But they also have a program where there are some onsite professional development that we can provide here through personnel from Landmark. And actually, I mentioned it when we had the, the day that Suzanne came to town, and, and actually Brookline has used that kind of outreach, so that's a nice thing to know. So, so those are just three things that, you know, I'm gonna continue to explore, and maybe next year we'll look for some other things, and, and we'll make some decisions about the extent to which these could be things that we suggest to parent for their own interest level, or these may be programs that we might wanna become involved with in a different way, perhaps as the one particularly at Martha's Vineyard, whether that, they are looking for some pilot schools for that particular program. It would not take the place of learning literacy, learning and improvement, but they're programs that focus on the same target group of kids, but in looking at, in both cases, looking to strengthening the strengths that those kids also have. So, the second goal is working with the school building committee, which we did, to meet all the MSBA requests and requirements to submit a new SOI. We did submit that by the, the date of August sixth, I believe that it was, and, and we're waiting to, to hear what's going to be going on there. So, it's a, it's a wait-and-see kind of thing. There are a lot of steps we had to go through and sign-offs in order to get that done, but it has been done. And I got, about a week and a half ago, I got a draft report from the demographer. Now, we had the demographer that we hired, which is Nesdeck, come to Hingham back in March and give a report to the building committee that was simply based upon what would happen if we move existing students in Hingham forward a grade, and do that over a ten-year period, and, and make a guesstimate each year of what the kindergarten, incoming kindergarten would be. And so, the result of doing that calculation was that projections look pretty even to what we now have moving forward, with peaks moving and larger elementary classes coming through again, but pretty flat overall. But, the demographer at that point only looked at history as projecting the future. They didn't look at the things that they now have considered, which are interviews with the town clerk, to look at things like birth rates in Hingham and nationally, and where's that going over the next ten years, to meet with local realtors. They asked for a group of realtors, and I gave them names of, of realtors that had individuals who had been in selling houses in Hingham for a long time, because we're looking at trends and what's happened over time that can tell us something about the future. They met with the building commissioner and, and the planning board administration to look at what projects, or building projects there are, in addition to the two big ones that we know about, and where they are in that process. And of course, they have, they have templates and formulas for how many children would, would be generated by a rental project, but two-bedroom condos, that might be generated by a small, single-house home purchase project. And used those numbers on all of the projects that we have on the, on the table. And so now they've come up with a, a different thought about moving forward, and it looks as if, and this is preliminary, because now I'm going to ask that the building committee meet again and look at it and ask some other questions about what haven't we thought about, what else might happen? And that will then generate a final, a semi-final report, I'll say. And we hope that that will, we'll have that before the end of the summer. But then, one of the things they've committed to in their initial bid process is that they will then take our data from the October one report, which is the official report for next year's enrollment. So it really gives us the ability to, to forecast another year out. We said ten years, but it'll be another year out. And then the final thing, which I don't think we're going to be ready to do yet, is to take that final report and use the data in it to populate the MSBA, what they call enrollment tool. The report will tell us all the steps they've taken and how they came up with the numbers and so on. MSBA doesn't necessarily want all that information, they simply want the, the data that's generated. And so, we will be at that point, probably not until we get the go-ahead with MSBA. So, we're waiting on MSBA scheduling the building committee meeting, which I intend to do this week. And I say see goal five, because goal five is really about the enrollment projection. Goal two was about working with MSBA to get that second SOI in. Goal three is the goal that we've had various titles for, but it's about this notion of what I call a common template, that parents and students would use to interact with, with the school in terms of what, what our homework assignments and what are long-term projects and all of that. So, I did some initial data collection, some of it was around, how did this notion ever get into the NEASC report? Because in the middle of, of things last fall, we heard a comment about that coming from one of the, the standards committee at the NEASC report. And in the report, I'm gonna explain all of this more, but it's really interesting how something gets into a report that people then forget, "You know what? I don't know how that got there." Well, I now know, I'll share that with you, it's not all that important. But I've met with the leadership team folks, which includes all of the directors. I've met with Katie and, and Joe Andrews, Katie Karen Condon and Joe Andrews on a couple of occasions. We've done a survey of all the teachers at the high school and all the teachers at middle school to see what, what tools they use now. And at the middle school, predominantly, everybody is using Google Classroom, so that is kind of a common platform. Some teachers also have a website, and they have, some of them use Edmodo, but all of them use Google Classroom. The high school, it's much more varied, although I was surprised at how many teachers do use Google Classroom. I have met with a group of students at the high school, they were ninth and eleventh graders, because we had to schedule meetings around MCAS, and to pick their brains and get their thoughts. I'll include that information in the report. We talked a bit at community outreach about, at one point, I wanted to bring together a forum of parents, but then when we were doing the survey, the stacker survey, I thought, "Gosh, people are gonna be over, you know, subscribed, so maybe we can put a question in the stacker survey that would be about that notion." Then we discarded that idea, because we thought, we couldn't find the right language to be assured that parents would know what we're talking about. And so, we said, "We'll monitor what the parents say at the forums, and maybe there's some feedback there." I went to one of the forums-
It came up at the one I went to. It came up at the, the focus group that I went to.
Yeah, I think I went to the very first one, and actually Kerry was there, and we talked about it some there, and then I poked my head in at two others, which were not very well attended, but I'm gonna try to pick up some ideas from the other one. So, so we've done a lot of, a lot of research, and I don't know what the result is going to be, whether we'll make a change or whether there's an evolution of change already beginning. I was very surprised to hear that different departments like different tools for different reasons. You know, the foreign language department likes-
Schoology.
Schoology. And that's because of, uh, the ability to use the videos and that kind of thing and.
When the, the technology adoption that we did for Spanish, the ancillary materials that they sell are located through school.
And I'll tell you one thing that one of the students said. So I had about 24, 25 students and they were, they were very, very polite, but they had good opinions about things. And the, the one, uh, young man that, at the end, when I asked, did anybody have anything more they'd like to say, he said, well, it seems to me that I have my preferences. I don't know what my parents' preferences are, but maybe they have, uh, a preference. High school kids didn't seem to be as concerned about their parent preferences as, as the parents might be. But, uh, but he said, but in the end, I want the teacher to use what reflects the way they teach the best. So, so anyway, more to hear on that. And for, for this one, you will get a, a written report at the end with recommendations, if we have recommendations, to make changes. But I have a lot of data and I'll share that in the report as well.
Dot, just quickly on that, are you also looking at how X2 fits into all of this?
Um, yes, because there.
Or not?
Yes, yes, I am. Because there is an option under X2 to do more communicating about curriculum than we currently do.
Okay.
Um, the fourth goal was, uh, getting ready for what, when we started was going to be the coordinated program review. Uh, now it's called a tiered system of, uh, monitoring, tiered focus monitoring. Um, we knew that there were going to be, um, parts of it, a large part of it really, related to special education, because that's always the case. And there were a few, um, sections, uh, standards or criterion that were related to, um, to civil rights. So that information, we found out about maybe February. I think there was a training first and then we got the information that, um, about the, um, standards detail would be coming. And it came in February. And all of the information needed to be submitted by, uh, May 15th. On April 10th or 11th, about one of those days, just before the break, we get information that now we, uh, need to do some more, uh, responses to, um, the, the standards and the criterion in the areas of homelessness, foster children, and military families. And so that's fine, um, big packet of things that we need to do. Mostly Jamie, um, needs to be submitting these things and I'm trying to help as I can. But, uh, the point was that that information was due on June 1. Now, we were scrambling to get done the things for the first phase and.
That we had four months of notice on, by the way.
Yeah, and got those done. And now all of a sudden, before we even finished submitting those, this is other set of, uh, of information and it has to come in. So we, uh, going to be working, we've permission to work however long we need to get it in, because it just wasn't realistic. And, you know, you might say, well, gosh, how many, how many children do we have that are in a homeless situation or that are foster children or that are military families? And the answer is, you know what, very few. However, the standards of the criterion and the, uh, the policies and procedures that you need in place and so on are just the same as if we had 100 children or 200 children in terms of the amount of work and getting ready. Now, all of this data gets to D E S A in the summer. But we also found out that, we also responsible for ELL, uh, some, again, not a lot of pieces, but that likely is going to be a conference call kind of a process. Whether or not and when a team would come here, having reviewed over the summer everything that we sent, which all has gone electronically, we don't know yet. So hopefully in September, we will know whether or not there will be people who will come, uh, as they were with the coordinated review or not, because it is called tiered focus monitoring. We know what group we're in and the group has determined we're in the group with all the other people who are going to have a coordinated program review in 1890. So that's our group and that's group eight. Um, but we don't yet know about the tiered part. And, uh, we know that if you're placed in tier one or tier two, based upon your responses to date, we know, um, that will seem, that people in tier one and tier two are, are folks that are, proceed to have a low risk of not being in compliance with the, in alignment with the standards. And three and four would suggest there are more problems. But we don't exactly know how you get into tier one, two, three, four. Nobody else does either, obviously. So, so there's more to come on that. But, um, as it always is, the preparation, which is a self-analysis or self-assessment year, is significant for these things. And I've mentioned this a lot, just as an aside, last year when we were talking about doing so many different kinds of studies and analyses and all of that, this, this in itself is a big, is a big undertaking. So, so, so far, we're getting all of our materials in and, and then we won't know anything until September, anything more until September. So. So that's, uh, that's where we are. Um, and, and goal five is, of course, going back to the study itself, Nezdeck study. So we'll bring that to the school building committee and then, uh, we'll share it. When it gets finalized, we'll share it with the school committee and the school building committee. And we'll update it in, uh, in October. And, um, and then we'll begin population of the, in enrollment tool when we get to the point where we know something more firm about when this project can get underway. So that's where we are at the moment.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have questions or anything on the, on cycle report? All right, great, thank you.
You know, I did mention in the annotated agenda, not here, that, you know, so you always think we should have done more, we could have done more perhaps, but we had a lot of other things going on. And, you know, included the two searches that were pretty comprehensive and, and a lot of kindergarten activity in November and December and in January about the age at, uh, entrance, which we hope to have, uh, analyzed by August 1. So lots been going on. And, um, and I think if you look at the big picture, uh, the three of us anyway who are mentioned in a number of these goals have been pretty busy. And pretty shorthand.
Yes, that is true as well. Keeps the job exciting, right? You never know what you're going to walk into every morning. All right, thank you so much. The next item on the agenda is six point five to receive notification of the appointment of Lance Mortland, custodian at PRS. So welcome to Lance Mortland. And then Liza, sorry, you had included minutes from salary negotiations in the packet, just for information.
Tomorrow.
No, 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 that's just for, it's up to me tomorrow. Sorry, okay. Um, okay, then item seven, any other items may not, that were not reasonably known, 48 hours in advance? Anyone? No? Great, all right. Number eight, subcommittee and project reports, um, of the last, so do you want to go to the.
Oh, um, for salary negotiations, um, we're still waiting for a response from the bus drivers and transportation workers. We sent them a draft memorandum of agreement, so that should be coming to a close soon. And I just, I put in the packet, um, the agenda for tomorrow night. So we'll talk about those, uh, survey consultants tomorrow night.
All right. Katie, do you have anything for, um, policy?
Policy, no. Um, thinking of doing a meeting in the next week or two. So I'll be reaching out to the members of policy to organize that. And for community outreach also, the only update, uh, I think there's a little bit of confusion regarding our focus groups. So just for our listeners, the people that received actual invites from stacker were, they took the survey and they actually said that they were interested in taking part in a focus group. So if you did not take the survey and you still want to partake, um, partake in a focus group, you can and we will be having another session of focus groups on June 7th. You can go to our Facebook page and see the times offered and also on our website. We're still organizing, I think, focus groups with the students and with the teachers.
Both will be Thursday. Students will be at 2:30 at Hingham High School or 2:40 at Hingham High School. And teachers will be at 4 o'clock here. And there'll be notice, the, the notices are going out, uh, to the faculty tomorrow morning. We, we had a little bit of scheduling with Alexa and we, we got it done.
So right now there's not a meeting scheduled for community outreach until we get all of those focus groups, I think, completed.
Okay, great, thank you. Ed, do you have any liaison reports or anything that you want to?
Say it.
And do you have any reports from liaisoning that you want to make?
Well, yes and no. I always like to, and have, like to give update on the, uh, activities of my friends on the South Shore Special Needs Athletic Partnership, SNAP group. But since I haven't been to the last few meetings due to medical conflicts and for years I've sat across at these meetings, the table from one of our new members on the school committee, who has attended the meetings lately, let me just throw the ball down to Kerry and let her do some, uh, talking to the people at home.
Okay. Yeah, no, I just wanted to mention, um, thanks to Liz O'Neill, the Assistant Director of Student Services and, um, a group of wonderful teachers who have volunteered. Um, they're going to help us out this year and just do kind of a special needs 101 training for our mentors, um, that are coming on for the summer program, um, to kind of teach them how to use, some of the kids have iPads and assistive communication devices. That's going to be huge for, for them. And I think it's going to really help, um, both the mentors and the kids have a better experience this summer. So I just wanted to say thank you to all of them for all of their work on that. And that's, um, coming up in, in June 13th, so.
Thank you. Carlos, long range planning?
Long range planning is beginning tomorrow. For 3:00 PM.
Here?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, Libby, do you have anything from any liaison things? Probably haven't had anything yet. Special ed subcommittee is meeting next. I've sent Pam the agenda, but we're going to be meeting next Tuesday, June 12th, 6 to 7 here, um, just before the, um, CPAC meeting, so we'll meet here. All right, that's it for subject and project reports. I will take a motion to adjourn.
I just noticed a, a bit of a typo on, the next school committee meeting, I think, is June 18th at 7:30.
Yeah.
As opposed to July 23rd.
Oh, thank you. He's already skipping ahead to the summer.
Yes, it definitely is June 18th.
June 18th, thank you, Ed, for catching that. And actually, the July 23rd, it will be 7:00. Thank you for catching that.
Good catch. I said to him, last meeting till July? He's like, no. I thought it was.
So could we clarify the CPAC meeting? I had thought it was the 13th.
I think they moved it.
They moved it to the 12th.
They had to move it to the 12th.
Okay. Well, will it still be here? Because the reason it was going to be here, rather than the library, the library was.
The library is still booked.
Yeah, the library is still booked, so I think we can change nights. And once we get through schedule conflicts, moving forward, we'll have consistent nights.
Okay, so, so this is still available, but it's Tuesday night?
Okay, thank you.
And seven?
I think so. I will confirm with, I'll double check.
Yeah, Tim had told me seven to nine.
Yeah, I'm, I'm pretty sure that's the, the goal.
Yes.
Thank you. And special ed is at what time?
6:00.
Okay, thanks.
Just prior to the meeting. I thank you.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I will accept that motion.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.